eleven dollars because we know what those numbers were. In the Measure H, they actually took a look at an inflation figure and added the inflation. So the larger number is largely because of an inflation factor they built in over the course of time. But we wanted to put this in current dollars to make sure that we didn't overinflate the estimates and give people a false sense of amount of money generated based on today's dollars.
So if inflation does rise up in the next 25 years, then this number will be much greater than the 280 million that will be collected.
That's correct.
That's correct. That's one question I have. And then the other ones, in Section A, just for clarity here, because it does, in Section 3, Number A, it says 90 percent in tax, and in parentheses it says 95.
Right. It was, that was a typo.
So which one is it?
I wrote the 95 in, but I forgot to change the number to 95. It should be 95 percent.
Should be 95.
That's correct.
So then that, there's also, it looks like a typo, then in same, Section 3B.
That's correct.
Says 10 percent in parentheses.
Should be 5.
It says 5. It should be 5. Okay. Make sure I get that right.
Those numbers were basically negotiated recently. The last time we heard this report, they were 90 and 10.
That's correct.
Okay, those are my questions. You want comments later?
Feel free to make comments now.
I think if this measure is going to get put on the ballot, I really want to make sure, since Measure H in 2006 did not get voter approval, so I think one of the biggest things to me is that we gotta, if it does go forward, that we make sure that we really get it right and don't give the voters something that they are going to reject again. So, good luck with that at the board meetings, guys. So, that being said, my personal concern is that, you know, we're really asking for a tax at a very difficult time. I think we all know that. We're all expecting a tax to come from the state for another half percent. So, another task is to make sure that one tax, if it gets floated, doesn't hurt the other one, and you kind of cancel each other out. I think that's something that really needs to be discussed, that this is really the right time this year to do it. My personal concern is that 25 years is a, is a really long time. Kind of been thinking about it as a, seems like it's a silver jubilee tax, you know, 25 years. I mean, that's a long time to really say that this is what we're gonna do, make sure that we really manage it correctly. I know you've got some mechanisms in place, but I'd be a lot more comfortable with 10 years, something like that. It really gives the public time enough to see what we're doing and then weigh in again on, hey, these guys are really getting our, our roads fixed, and, you know, I'd be willing to, to come back with an extension. But 25 years is, just seems too long to me. So, that's probably my, my largest concern. And especially with your information about, you know, I know the federal government is planning on some road tax measures. They do much bigger projects. There'll probably be infrastructure and bridges and things like that. But if the state has also been backfilling with their general fund, and they put something in place, I mean, that's what kind of happened to us with Measure H. It was for widening Jameson Canyon. It didn't pass, but we're widening it anyway. So, you know, I just don't want that to, kind of, that kind of creep to kind of come in. So that's why 10 years would really be the most I would pretty much favor on this.
I understand. Mr. Mayor, if I might respond to a couple of those things, just for some clarity.
I was going to, but I'll let you do it.
Okay. Number one, Measure H, when it was brought forward before, was basically 64.4 percent would go to local streets and roads. The other 35.6 percent were going to things like Jameson Canyon, the South School flyover, and some other items that seemed to find voter distaste. And that's why we put this measure largely on a local streets and road maintenance issue, because that's the thing that we had the most difficult time attracting money to. The state measure that you're talking about, as we understand it from the governor's office right now, they're looking at a quarter cent that they're going to the voters for in November 2012, but it would only last for four years. They would expire prior to this measure taking effect. So that's something we have been monitoring and watching to make sure that we don't increase the taxation to our residents. And 25 years is a long time. I remember in San Diego, when we passed our measure in 1987, that was 25 years ago, and the voters re-upped because they were very successful in delivering the projects they wanted and were trying to model that under that. But I'm sure that'd be an item for discussion at our, at our board meeting tomorrow.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
In terms of a question, at the last NCTPA board meeting, I know I brought up, and there were some other questions brought up, about the whole fact that this is written to say that when the flood control bond, or not the bond, but the, the sales tax item expires, then this would come into effect. And I went to the flood control meeting for Mayor Dunbar last week, and it wasn't discussed. I don't know if it's been discussed since then. Has there been a discussion that's been more definitive? Because I continue to hear, well, what if we need flood money in 2018? Or what if this has to be extended? And I, that, that, you know, seems to still be out there. And that's one of my major concerns, well, in terms of, forget about the tax itself, but if I'm, if I'm looking at saying this should go forward, the idea of it passing, one of my major concerns is people are still out there saying publicly, yeah, but what about the flood money that we're, we're going to need? Can you address that?
Yes, I can. Supervisor Dodd asked the same question of the flood control district, and he, and he'll read it at the board meeting tomorrow. He's received assurances that the flood district has the money they need, they have the subventions they're getting from the state, and they're about 65, I think, percent of the federal subventions that are coming in. The only money that is short right now are not local funds, or not state funds, they're the federal funds. And Supervisor Dodd, at the board meeting, board supervisors meeting today, you know, stated that there is no way that this county is gonna go back and ask the residents of this county to backfill the federal liability. That the federal liability will be fulfilled by the federal government at some point in time, and there's no need to go back and do that. And so I think he'll have a letter that he'll read as to the status of the, of the flood control measure at this time. So they seem to be in pretty solid footing. Things are coming in a little bit better than they anticipated. Actually, and it looks like their maintenance reserve fund will actually be a little higher than they anticipated. So I, you know, there's absolutely no guarantee, but I think there's, probably 95 percent of the way there that they have what they need, and they're not gonna go out for an extension of that measure.
Okay.
Well, I remember during the board discussion, a conversation about having language that said if, by some chance, flood control revenue was still required, that that would just continue to push back the sales tax for transportation. So there would not be the opportunity for any overlap at all. It would, the first half cent would, would have to expire with full satisfaction of that.
That's correct.
That revenue, and then the next one would kick in, even if it meant delaying the implementation of, of this proposed tax.
Right. That's correct. That's what, the way the ordinance is written.
And that also, I think, spoke a little bit to what Councilmember Mueller was asking about. There's no proposed net tax increase in either of the scenarios being proposed. It's either split the, split the one cent in half, or wait for the other cent to basically just continue on what everyone is used to paying that's going to flood control. It would then just go to local streets and road repair and congestion relief. I know that the return-to-source allocation formula was critical, it still is, I'm sure to the Vice Mayor, and my potential evaluate, or evaluation of this measure, I know it's important to each of the jurisdictions that we see enough money to come back to take care of our own road repairs. Have you heard any updates on other cities that have been talking, at least two in particular, about going with their own local sales tax as opposed to a countywide tax?
Yeah, the city of St. Helena was considering their own, but they put that off until they see how this measure goes forward. You know, they are in desperate need as well, but they're not gonna pursue anything in the June election, which is what they were initially looking at. They're gonna wait till they see how this plays out, to see if this goes forward or not, before they do their own. The city of Napa had some discussion on it, but they want to stay in a countywide plan, and they are waiting to see if this goes forward as well, before they take a look at doing their own. So I think right now, you know, as Benjamin Franklin said, we must all hang together, or most assuredly we'll hang separately. And I think they're all, right now, hanging together.
And I don't know if you've had enough time yet with these new allocation numbers of 95 and 5 percent to get feedback from some of the folks that have spoken to the NCTPA board that were opposed to the 90 percent, that they wanted basically 100 percent to go to road repair. Have you heard any response yet? I know we're gonna hear it tomorrow, but for this audience tonight.
We're gonna hear it tomorrow. We do have a meeting with, to the major proponents of 100 percent, with the Sierra Club and the Napa Tax Payers Association tomorrow morning, to see if we can reach a consensus. I think that will be an item that may be discussed at the board as well, you know, whether to take it to 100 percent or leave it at 95.5. It's always a balance between, you know, what's appropriate and, you know, garnering regional support. I think we've gone a long, long way in working with our various stakeholders in trying to find consensus. We're very close. I can't say we're completely there yet. We may not get absolutely there, but we're a lot closer than we were three months ago, one month ago.
Great. If that's all we have, thank you very much for, again, giving us this update, and Vice Mayor and I will be seeing you tomorrow.
Thank you very much for your time.
That concludes our presentations for this evening, and we will be moving on now to our public hearings, of which we have three. And the first one, Item 9A, is the Heston Vineyards Master Development Plan for 6548 Washington Street that was continued from our January 17 meeting. And what I would like to do, before we get into this item, is I just wanted to disclose that I did have a conversation along with our town manager, Steve Rogers, and our planning director, Bob Tierney. We did meet with a couple members of the applicant's team to review the opinions that were presented at the January meeting by the town council. So I wanted to disclose that. Don't know if anyone else has any other disclosures?
No, I just received an email from the applicant, but graciously declined to meet and suggested that we could hear all their comments in public.
Okay, thank you very much. So with that, let's move on to a staff report.
Thank you. This is a continued review of the proposal at 6548 Washington Street to construct a new commercial building that will have a proposed use of wine tasting and commercial retail. In this case, it will be cookware. The site is currently developed with a triplex and a detached single-family dwelling. All buildings on the site will be demolished as proposed by this project, along with most of the site trees. None of them are significant trees or heritage trees. This site is 7,162 square feet in size, so it is not a very large site for a commercial project. And what I'd like to do, this is the second trip to the council and third, total third trip. They went to the ZDRB back in December 13th with the original plan, and came before the council on January 17th with a revised plan in response to comments at the ZDRB. And now tonight, the applicant has submitted two alternative plans, and I would like to highlight the difference between the two alternative plans as against the last plan you saw on January 17th. And I think I'll do that up at the board here, at the microphone.
So while you're setting up, if I can ask a clarifying question for council and the audience. Are you asking us to decide tonight both on the architecture as well as the use of the property?
Two applications tonight, and the resolution, and both have separate sets of conditions of approval. One of them is design review for the structure, and the second is a master development plan that technically includes design review, but we've kind of separated out the use from the design, and those have separate sets of conditions of approval contained in that resolution. So you're, you're really considering both the new structure and the use permit for the wine tasting and retail.
So if the first part of that does not move forward, do we still have anything to evaluate in terms of the potential uses? Or does the, does Part B depend on Part A?
I believe they're related and dependent on each other, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, this, let me get it where everybody can see. This graphic at the bottom here is a good summary of the original plan submitted to ZDRB, what came before the council on the January 17 meeting, and then the revision three and four, which are presented tonight. As originally, when the project started off, it was, I should also note, the surrounding uses along the north side is Cindergate Real Estate at the corner there of Humboldt. There is a single-family residence adjacent to it on the east side, and to the south is Edward James Courtyard, a mixed-use commercial. So, this is the north side. That was the property line at the time of this original design. It was zero-lot line on the property line, taller building at, this is showing the maximum 30 feet, and it was 29 feet 2 inches. And it did otherwise have setbacks that were complying on the front, rear, and south side. I should remind you that the only setback that is prescribed in the ordinance for commercial districts is the front 15-foot. Otherwise, the sides and rear are set at time of master development plan approval. In response to comments at the ZDRB meeting, particularly about the impact to adjacent properties on the north side, the applicant returned with this plan, and this green highlighted area, shaded area, shows the building being pulled back three feet on the first floor, although it was a fairly tall first floor at 21 feet 4 inches. And then it jogged in 2 and 1/2 feet for a 5 and 1/2-foot setback to the north property line on this second element, that had been shortened somewhat in height to 27 and 1/2 feet from the 29 roughly. Otherwise, the driveway, the parking, those elements remain the same. There's, there's eight parking spaces on site. There is a second floor residential component comprised of a studio and one-bedroom unit. If you recall, those have two parking spaces that are covered. Otherwise, there's five uncovered and one handicapped for the commercial use at the rear of the lot. The driveway runs along the south boundary to access that driveway, or that parking. So the revisions that have been brought forward tonight are revisions that address the north side again setback, and that revision three, which is shown here, has increased the setback on the, on the first floor to 5 feet, and that's true for both the first and the second alternatives. First floor setback is now from, increased from 3 to 5. And then on the second floor setback, that has been increased to 8 and 1/2 feet from 5 and 1/2 feet on revision three. Revision four has taken a little different approach in that they've increased the most to 10 feet 4 inches for this element on the second floor here. And in doing so, they have combined the two residential units, the studio and one-bedroom, into one residential two-bedroom unit, is their proposal in revision four. That will increase the FAR for the commercial area, too. They've, on the revision four, increased it to 23.7. That's still under the 25 percent that's permitted for commercial. And they did that to try, on the small lot, to attempt to capture as much of the commercial area available to them. In revision three, it's 20 and 1/2 feet, which is very close to the previous, these previous alternatives that were 19 and 1/2 feet for commercial FAR. The residential FAR throughout all of these schemes has remained less than a half a percent within 14 and 1/2. This one, revision four, is 14.9, and revision three is 14.7. So they've remained fairly constant. The architecturally, the appearance and the difference between these two revisions, and there is a graphic that's also shown up on the screen there, is the building is a little more pulled out towards the parking, or the driveway that runs along the south boundary. It has this mechanical room element that is 27 and, 27 feet 10 inches, that houses HVAC. And it also projects into the front setback to a distance of, at its closest, 12 feet. And it's not the entire building, because the entire building is kind of skewed to this angular front yard. And it's only this portion that clips this corner here that's at 12 feet. And then in revision three, everything is outside of the 15-foot front setback. So they've, they've picked up a little more floor area for the commercial, and they have combined the residential units into one two-bedroom unit as opposed to one small studio and a one-bedroom unit up top. Those are the essential differences. The otherwise, the driveway, as you saw the last time, is still 14 feet. The trash storage areas remain down in the southeast corner, and also there's one incorporated into the building at this location. Fencing, screening, there was a discussion last meeting about the height of that and what it could be, and the applicant is open to working with the neighbors. Right now, they propose a concrete masonry unit wall around the parking area here, and then going to a six-foot wood fence, or if the neighbors are agreeable to another material, they would be open to, to that as well. Along the south, there is currently an existing hedge on the Edward James Courtyard property, and they are going to probably leave that. There's a fence that's dilapidated, and take that down, and just use the hedge to demarcate the boundary there. Those, the applicant has a presentation as well, and those are the essential differences between the two revisions that they're presenting tonight and the, the one you saw on the 17th, and of course, the one, ZDRB, is not in play and hasn't been. But those are the new changes, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Questions? Questions about the staff report so far? The one I did want to ask you, Bob, is there was a material change on the exterior? Did I read that correctly, at least the second floor exterior? Was there a proposed siding change?
I think the material palette is essentially the same. It's, it's shown on this graphic up here. It's copper where the brown is. And then there's a CMU wall, and then stucco. The white is stucco, CMU wall here.
So I, I see on the second paragraph of the design review discussion analysis, on page four of eight, the applicant has modified the exterior finish of the second story, replacing stucco with tongue-and-groove wood siding, a material common to residential construction. Does that ring a bell?
Pharaoh, the applicant may.
Sure. We'll have them address that.
That may be up in here, but I'll leave that to the architect.
Okay.
I do have one question. Based on this graphic, and can you explain to me then, I'm, am I looking at it, if I were looking north?
Correct.
So, it looks like the driveway is on the south side in this graphic.
That's correct.
But is the driveway on the south?
In the proposal, it is.
Uh-huh. Okay, thank you.
Yes. And one other thing I ought to highlight, the difference between this element here, this kind of tower element, and revision four, which is up on the screen here, the difference is that houses HVAC and mechanical equipment. On revision three, there is no, I'll sit here and point. There is no power on that side, as you see over here, and what they've done is take the HVAC and put it in a screened area on the central portion of that roof that has a four-foot screen around it. And it's, although it looks more prominent in the projection, or the elevations there, it's really something you would not perceive from the street or adjacent properties, because it's in the center of that roof. That's a two-foot, you'd be walking around right on that level right there. It's a two-foot parapet, and then the screen projects another two feet above that. But from the vantage point of where you would really perceive the building, it's not going to be evident.
And so that's the one piece from submittal option three that staff is recommending, along with option four, which is the applicant's preference? Is that accurate?
I would have to say that staff was in favor of that less prominent treatment on the HVAC, where it's central in the roof and screened with a small fence around it. And then they submitted this week, this rendering, and, that shows this element of the building that houses the, otherwise houses the mechanical in this revision four. And based on the appearance of it in this, I, I have less objections to it than I did initially, just looking at the elevations to revision four.
And I'm sure we'll hear from the applicant the reason why that proposal of a tower versus the screen mechanical in the center of the roof, whether that is in response to moving some of the massing away from the north end, or if there's another reason. So if you could potentially cover that, that would be appreciated. Any other questions of staff before we open the public hearing and start off with the applicant? No? So let's move on to that next stage. I'll open the public hearing part of this item, and we will certainly hear from all of the members of the public that are here tonight that would like to speak, but I will invite the applicant to start off, just in case you're able to answer some questions that people have in their minds, and we'll go from there. So, welcome to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Baro Esala, the architect of the project. And I'll be very brief, because I think the staff report by Bob is very complete in terms of what we've done over the past few weeks in making revisions to the project to address both the neighbors' concerns and the recommendations of the council at the last meeting. So I will address just a few points that came up, which are questions. One, on that graphic that's over there, I would just like to emphasize further beyond what Bob pointed out, that in revision three and four, also the height of the building has been reduced by the green block that's above the roof line. So compared to the original submittal, which was further off on the drawing there, the height has been reduced considerably in these last couple of revisions. The point that you brought up about the siding is applicable to the north side of the building, that we changed the materials from stucco to siding in order to, again, address the neighbors' concerns about the. Sorry. And, I think I can point that over here. So, this is the north facing side.
Here, I think this will be better.
Is it any good now?
I think it's been too much better.
And this is the north siding, north side of the building, and the wood siding was applied to this side of the building, which actually faces the neighbors on the north.
Mr. Esala, if you could just make sure to hold that close, since you're, we want to make sure, not only are you on the record, but the folks.
I'm not good at this.
But, folks.
I think it may have accidentally had the mute button pushed, so I think he'll be okay.
And lastly, what I want to address is the mechanical equipment is still not working. The mechanical equipment on the roof. Originally, when we had submission number three, there were two residential units, and the equipment was placed on top of the stair tower in order were two residential units, and the equipment was placed on top of the stair tower in order to avoid noise being disturbed, being distributed and be disturbing to the two units. Now that we've changed the plans, the actual location that works best for the mechanical equipment is where we're showing it, which is, again, on top of the stairs, but it's had to be pulled further south so as to, again, not disturb the unit directly underneath. Also, this was in a request that was made to us by the neighbors to the north, that we should keep the equipment room closed and as far away as possible from the north side of the building so the sound of the equipment would not affect the neighbors to the north. So that location, the new location, was intended to serve those purposes. And other than that, I think what Bob has gone through is essentially what we're presenting at this meeting. And it is the fourth version that we're trying to get approval on. That's the version that has the biggest setback from the north, and we think it addresses the neighbors' concerns more than number three. And for that, the owners agreed to give up one of the units and just have a single unit, residential unit, as against the two that was part of the package that we submitted initially to the board.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Questions of the applicant?
No, thank you.
Vice Mayor? No. Thank you. And Bob, I do want to just mention that all of our conversation so far has been just about the structure. I think if we go through that conversation, we still need to address the use...
Correct.
...on site. So are you going to ask for an actual vote before we proceed with the, the conditions of use portion, or, because I only see one resolution. Is that accurate?
That's right. And in the heading, it contains both design review and master development plan and use permit. I think you can move depending, unless there is a, an issue with the design that is not resolved, move from that into the use component.
And if there is resistance to the design proposal, then we'll deal with that if we have to deal with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Either with direction to the applicant or generally speaking...
We'll see what happens. Okay. I invite members of the public. I know some of you are here to speak on this item, so who's going to be first? Ms. Gates, please. And if you could do your best to speak into the microphone so that the folks watching at home, as well as our record, will be able to hear all of your comments.
Great. Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to address some of his, well, number one, we're still affected on the north side by the mass of his building. What he's done is he's put, pulled the building further more, which now puts it in front of my windows. What I've done is if you'd refer to his drawing and where he starts the building on the left-hand side as you face it, here's the little wall that he addresses on his drawing. This is in front of one of my windows. Now he's pushing the building all the way here and notching it forward even further. So now that does shadow the rest of the sunlight that I could have had in the front, at least into my room, is gone. Not to mention all the sunlight to the backyard and to the backyard of Kathleen's house in the back, which belongs to the Beard Family Trust. What I did was, I also did just a little report that I was able to do on how the sun really affects the buildings. So here we are in February 15th, and as you can see, this is 9:00 AM in the morning. And so there's no sun at all on the property. Here it is, 12 noon, February 15th. Still no sun in the backyard. Here we are at 4:00. Still no sun at all. And now the building's further...
Cindy, can you make sure you address the council primarily and speak to the microphone?
Okay.
So I'm sorry, we'll have to have the audience be secondary because we really need to hear your comments.
All right. So, and now, this picture is now moved even further with exhibit number four. Okay? If you look at his sunlight pictures, they're only a month later. It'd be this month in March, and they're totally different than what mine came out. It shows sun on, in some situations, and no sun in others. The other thing that I think is, is a little difficult for me to understand is here are the renderings from the first time that he proposed the building to us. When we all know that that was 29 and a half feet tall, it wasn't as small as it looks next to my building. So when he does the renderings on the two buildings, and here he didn't even include my building, when that's one of the oppositions is, and the problems, is that he's diminishing our usability of our buildings. It would be the single-family dwelling, of course, in the back, and my building in the Again, picture, this building will now come up here somewhere, covering both my windows now, not just setback. So I'm still having a problem with that. These renderings, again, that he's shown us, show the buildings so much lower because now what he's done, instead of taking the camera or the CAD program and putting it half underground so that it shows the two buildings looking similar in height, like he did here, now what he's doing is an aerial, so it's tough to see how big one building is next to the other. And he's, here's his shadow plan in December, and I'm sure you can all see them, and as you go through them, it shows the impact, and then in some, he's just erased what happens. So he's just taken the shadows out, period. Where, you saw my report in March, I'm sorry, in February, here's one month later, and there's no shadows. So I don't think that's accurate. I think it's a lot better what he's done, how he's reduced the height in the front a little bit and stacked the one unit that he wants to keep in the back on top. It does show much better there, but still, the way he's brought it forward, huge impact on my building doing that. And we haven't, we haven't remedied the sun, the lack of sunlight at all in the back of both these properties. Doing real estate for 33 years, I know that what happens when you don't get sun on the side of a stucco building or in a backyard, you have moisture, you have mildew, and you have mold. Okay? So with the two buildings, as close as they're going to be with never any sunlight again on them, you're going to have mold up and down the back of my building, I'd say within a year, go through at least one winter where it stays wet all that time because no air gets through there and no sunlight ever gets there again. So those are the, those are the impacts that I think that are, that are tough on me. Not only that, but bringing his building forward as he is, it's hard to see because he didn't add my building there, but bringing the building as forward as he is, and then putting up a little hestion wall, which I think is nice, but again, that covers my windows and whatnot, so I can't see down the street anymore, and I can't see outside anymore. So those, those things are a little upsetting still to me. We had a meeting with the people and, and the applicant, and we talked. And I kept suggesting him moving it to the south side, leaving the driveway where it is, so we're not as impacted, and we will put up with the traffic coming in and out of there as long as he moves the building to the south side of the property. I understand his, his constraints doing that, but I still see more room for improvement, and he didn't even attempt that. He didn't attempt to draw that or try to remediate that problem whatsoever, I'm seeing. Had he tried, and several times when I sketched it out, and I'm not an architect, but I can still, still come up with a plan that works better on the south side, it doesn't, doesn't ruin both those two properties. It's fun to let a new person come into town and have a new business, build a building that we can all appreciate and whatnot, but when then, it destroys two other properties in town and one other business that's been here a while in town, how's that fair? I mean, I'm still having a problem with that. I would love to get along with everybody, but still, I think we still have more work to do. I'd like to see him try and do this on the south side of the property. I understand that his setback's going to be closer to the street, but it, maybe if he put his patio to the left, maybe if he put some, what if he pushed it all the way back and put some of the parking down the side at an angle instead of in the back? Now he's way out of my face. He's back, he's on the south side, we've got some setbacks, and we have the other parking at an angle down the side of the driveway. Maybe that will work. I don't know, but nobody's come up with anything. I don't think it's been tried. I understand he wants to show off this side of the building. He thinks that's great. I appreciate it as well, but I think it needs to be positioned a little more friendly to our properties instead of destroying the value of them. The value will be greatly impacted. I'm going to say the house, I don't know who's going to buy the house when you never have sunlight in your backyard, and I don't know what happens to the value of the building I'm in when I'm looking at a penitentiary wall. And when you think, what's this, 11 feet? It's almost three times this height. By the time we're, by the time we're finished, that's what I'm looking at in my backyard. And out my back glass doors, now the glass doors from the, from the main part of my office, if you see, it's notched, which there's no drawings there of it. But I've got full view of that wall. He's adding some wood to it. But if you want to sit at a desk like this looking at something three times this height, three times this height, I don't. I see that as a problem, and I think it's, a property is, is going to be rendered hugely impacted price-wise, and the usability of it is now going to be, I think, greatly impacted. So I think you get my point. I won't take up any, much more of your time, but I, I still don't think that we're, we're at a point where it's fair to everybody involved. Thank you.
Before you go, do you know the height of your building?
I believe it's about 14 feet.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm not sure. I, it's hard for me to get up at the top and drop a tape, you know, but I think that the front part of it is that in his, is much taller. I know the front of it, he's saying, is 14 feet in the front now, which I read, but of course, it protrudes out in front over the window forward, much more than you would think on the plans. And of course, it covers, I don't know about my signage. I think my signage will be just right above that when it gets done. Now, the other thing I would, I would suggest, which we do a lot in construction in my business, we put up yellow tapes, orange tapes, whatever you do up on...
Storypools?
Yes, those. And then everybody can see exactly where the building's going to be before it's permanent. I think that could be a suggestion, you know? It's an idea.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll encourage the applicant at the end of all our public comment to, I'll invite you back up to address some of the issues, as well as, Bob, if, as you listen to some of this dialogue, I'd like you to help us also make sure that, that we're factually, as factually accurate as possible so there's no, there's no confusion about the location or impacts, if you could. I don't know if you want to maybe hold, if, if there's a comment now after this comment and after future comments, if you'd like to address things right away, or we can wait till the end?
I just have two quick...
Okay.
...observations. One, the wall that Heston is on...
The lettering, that protruding wall?
That's set back some distance from the north line. It's not in line with the north edge of the building, and I believe it's probably not over seven feet at the, at the most in height, and Pharaoh may correct me on that, but, so it's not right against the, in line with the north side of the building, and it's not the same height as the first story of the building.
And are you able to, with the renderings, identify exactly how far forward the proposed location is and how it could impact Ms. Gates's building?
Well, just to, and this would be another measurement thing, but the, the building in three, at the 15-foot setback line, the corner of the building is moving from there, and if you use the, this existing wall that's encroaching onto this property as a guide, it's moving from about the edge of that wall there over to there. The building's not shifting all that much in terms of overall, between three and four. It's, it does shift down here to where it's 12-foot encroachment, but that edge of that corner of that wall between there and there, it's going from slightly past that wall to maybe a foot or two, a couple of feet east or west of that edge of that wall.
So the corner, the front northwest corner of the main structure you're saying is, is on the right edge of that protruding wall or further in?
In conforming with the 15-foot setback, it's right there, kind of in line with that, the corner of that wall that we're using for a reference point.
So, so the building itself does not directly block the windows, but the Heston signage wall would, would extend...
Well, it's, it's down here.
Right, but it's, I understand that it's, it's south of the windows, but in terms of the blockage, direct line of sight up Washington, the, the building itself does not directly impede the windows, but that extension of the front entrance would?
That may, yeah.
Just want to make sure that we're clear on that fact. And again, the applicant is welcome to address the specific, you know, issue as we move forward.
Right, yeah.
So...
And that's, this is the wall, I believe, is probably seven feet in height that, at the most maybe, and it is set, it's not at the corner of the building, it's set more towards the center of the building.
Okay. Well, with that, let's move on for more public comment, and we'll try to address some of these issues so that we don't lose focus. Yes, welcome.
Yes, I'm Linda Beard, representing Beard Family Trust that owns the commercial property on the corner of Humboldt and Washington, and also the residential unit on, on Humboldt Street. I've known these properties all my life. Grew up having family functions in the backyard. Thought of no sunlight, whether it's to myself or to tenants, is an absolute crime, let alone it will devalue our property, and that is significant for our family. So I would ask you to please reconsider. We have talked with the owners on numerous occasions to please try flipping this over to the other side. I know the council was actually looking more favorably to granting some variance with them being closer to the road, that they wouldn't need necessarily the 15-foot setback. That's totally been ignored with our wishes. It's, it's just not working for us at all. And again, the thought of the sunlight, it's, it's traumatic. It's, it's devaluing our property. So I, I hope you really realistically look at this. I challenge you to go to the property, maybe take the, the lines for heights so you can really, really take a thorough view of what it's going to be and how it will impact us, instead of just looking on paper that is, in my opinion, quite distorted. So anyhow.
And I should have asked, Cindy, but I think I know the answer, but I'll invite you to come up. Previously, when we had our initial conversation, I asked, or we asked collectively, what would be acceptable, and, and my understanding from what you're saying is the only, adjusting the building is not acceptable in your opinion where it's located, the only viable solution in your opinion is for the building to move to the south side of the property. Is that accurate?
That's correct. It's, it's like a prison wall. When you, when you're in that backyard, right now, even with a five-foot setback, it's exactly from that wall to a back bedroom of the residential home, it's eight feet. With this thing that, I, I never did hear what the exact height of it is now, but it used to be at 30 feet. So if you could imagine something way at 30, I know it's been brought down some, but it's, it's huge. Granted, my grandmother's old house that's there was built in the 1860s, and frankly, I'd love to see it declared a historical landmark for a lot of reasons, which we went over in the last meeting. But this is a crime to take that vantage away from us. I know the new owners say that there's a tree there. Well, we haven't been happy with the tree either. Well, we haven't been happy with the tree either. That's created a lot of mold and mildew issues, uh, but the prior owners were not receptive to doing any pruning or anything else. We pruned the heck out of that tree from our side of the property to try and help, but it's—it's been a huge frustration for us for years, and a maintenance issue for us also for many, many years. But the thought of a wall like this that is so permanent—it's—it's not like trimming a tree. This is forever, and it's just too massive for us, and I—I really believe that needs to be taken into consideration by you here at the council. And again, no consideration seems to have been made to try and flip the building onto the other side, where they, on their south side then, would just have Edward James parking lot, which would be open space, uh, that would give some break between that structure and theirs, and then with the driveway going down the north side, would again give a break between their structure and our structures. And that's just not even been considered. So I—I would encourage you to please think about that, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
And normally, I would ask for a verbal, but Cindy, is that your position also, that you feel that only moving the building to the south end would be acceptable, in your opinion? Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Okay.
It is.
The answer was yes, for those who couldn't hear. No, I'm talking about for—just for the record. I know we all could hear you. Okay, thanks. Um, I don't—Bob, I don't think there's anything in particular that you need to address immediately on that? Okay? Next, please.
Hi, my name's Kathleen Braun, and I'm the one that lives in that single-family dwelling at 2080 Humboldt Street, and I know I've given you some emails regarding my position on this property. Pharaoh, I—I really love the design. It's—it's—it's a beautiful design. I really like it. Not on my side. Okay? Uh, if you go out to my house right now, um, because it's still winter, it's wet. In front of the house, never dries out all winter long, okay? When the sun finally comes around, past Cindy Gates' building, it's so low in the sky, um, everybody else is dry in my neighborhood, and my area is, like, completely wet. And now with this building still in the back of it, casting the shadows that it does, I—the back of the house is now all going to be wet, and I'm starting to feel like a little mushroom living in the dark air. Um, seriously, it's—it's going to be a huge impact, um, and I'm with Cindy here. I believe that the solution here is that it simply has to go to the south side. There's—I—I just don't see any other way of doing it. Uh, it's still too close to the—the house, uh, the backyard with that building there, Cindy's property coming around, uh, looks like the Pelican Bay State Penitentiary Exercise Yard. It's just—it's just—it's all enclosed now. It's too high, it's too long, it casts too much of a shadow. And I believe at the last meeting, um, one of the city, uh, people here said that, well, no one was entitled to a view, and I agree. Uh, I'm not asking for a view. Uh, what I'm asking for is a little bit of sunlight and just light coming into that back bay window there, which is about the only sunlight I get in that house there. Uh, the bedroom windows back there, which are—there are seven of them, which are only about six feet from the fence, are going to be greatly impacted, and I suspect that that bedroom, uh, if it's going to stay in shadow a lot, is simply going to grow mold in there. The house is not insulated, as Lunda says. It's a very old house. Uh, yes, there are trees back there that I go back and do my slash-and-burn technique just to open up light in there. Um, to have this thing as high as it is, as long as it is, casting that much shadow, it's—it's out of the question. It simply has to move to the south side. I—like I said, I—I don't want to say completely no to this project because I really like this building, and I would really like to see it on that property. Just can't go there. It's got to move. I would really like to see Pharaoh make some sort of an attempt to see if he can squeeze it in on the south side. Any questions?
No. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Other public comment?
Good evening. My name is Steve Andrews, 1984 Yountville Crossroad. Uh, my wife and I, Sally, have, uh, lived in—in town for some time. Uh, I worked in—in town for many years, about 21 years, at the Vellagio and Espa and Vintage Inn. Uh, I'd—I'd like to say, first of all, uh, we're—we are—as residents, we're in favor of this project. We know the—the applicant, uh, we know the passion that they have for, um, a fine product. We know that, uh, what—how they support, um, and look forward to supporting the community. I'm very encouraged by the fact that I'm hearing a lot of feedback with it—that the building is—the—the design of the building is sound. I mean, we—we've been following this since—since day one, and we think it's a tremendous improvement. Uh, even with the opposition, with the neighbors, I'm hearing that the—the design of the building is sound. I'm—I'm not in a position, uh, to say that you can move the building to the south side. I don't think that's probably an acceptable plan for the applicant. I'm simply guessing. Otherwise, they probably would have been able to do that. It—it's probably not a viable option. I do know, uh, from my past experience in working with—with development, and certainly working with the town, with Vellagio and Vintage Inn and—and, uh, the Marketplace, you always want to try and do what you can to work with the neighbors. You do as much as you can to ensure that, uh, you mitigate the impact of, um, of a positive project to ensure that you're getting the absolute best that you can. Based on what we've seen and how we've looked at this—I'm speaking for my wife, too. She had to fly to Australia, otherwise she would have been here tonight, but, um, uh, this is a project that is in keeping with the spirit of Yountville. It accomplishes a number of things. Uh, it continues to engage our visitors. As, uh, Councilmember Dornbecker mentioned a little bit earlier, we are a visitor-welcoming community. We have to find ways that we can continue to improve the town to invite visitors here. We also want to keep folks who are wine tasting off the roads as much as we can, and there's no better way to do that than invite them into the town of Yountville to experience our tasting rooms and our restaurants. So for that reason, I think it also supports the vision of the town. It also supports the vision of the town because it encourages the walking element of—of the community of Yountville that we all love. Uh, and one of the reasons that many of us live here is because it is—it is a walking community, and it—it represents all of those great things that—that we love as—as residents, and it's the same thing that continues to attract our visitors to the community. So, uh, again, I just want to say that we support the project. I'm pleased to hear, even in the opposition, that there is—the design of the building is, uh, and the purpose of the building, and the function of the building, and the form of the building, is, uh, all within bounds and—and is acceptable. Um, but, uh, you know, as I said, I—I—I don't know how you can ask an—an applicant to completely change the, uh, signature of a building. I—I don't know that—how-how that can be done and—and still remain viable as a project. So, again, while I can't speak to that, I simply have to—to pose that question, and I'm sure that, uh, that the architect can speak to that more fully. But, uh, thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it. Uh, we certainly support the project, as I know that many people who we've spoken to throughout town, chefs, uh, residents, uh, business people, support it as well. We think it's a great, great addition to the community of Yountville. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who's next? Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Peter Jacobson, and I've come before. I've been support this project very much. Uh, I—and I've lived in town for over 30 years, uh, and I remember, actually, when many of the downtown areas were being redesigned. In other words, what was downtown Yountville going to look like, and a lot of parameters were set up. Uh, and the parameters are still in place, and, uh, we're now getting some infill, uh, in a number of different locations. And I think that this project fits those visions. I mean, it fits within the confines of those suggested, um, building things. I think a lot of accommodations have been made to the neighbors, um, who are also in a commercial district, uh, and also have the privilege of changing their properties if they ever decide to, within the parameters that were already set up. Uh, and so, once again, I am very supportive of this project and the parameters that it's currently confined to or set in.
Thank you. Yes, hello?
Hello, Eric Bedford, Yountville Crossroad resident. Um, just real fast, just for clarification, uh, this site is commercially zoned today, correct? Yeah, okay. So I—I feel like a lot of these conversations and—and thoughts really should have happened when the upzoning happened. I mean, irrespective of this building, I think you're going to end up having a little friction with, uh, neighbors and whatnot if, you know, whoever ends up there, not necessarily this applicant. And I think the conversation should have happened then of, hey, what's going to happen when it gets built out? Very similar way Peter said about the infill, solely filling out, but I—I just feel like this conversation, I think, could have happened sooner if—if people were concerned about the—the upzoning nature of the lot, because I think it's been there. But I don't want to dwell on that. A planning concept I deal with a lot, and I do a lot of mixed-use development in really environmentally sensitive areas, is I end up with setbacks, and setbacks are confusing because you want to have buffers with the adjacent property owners, but a problem with setbacks is they render a portion of the property useless, not really for pedestrians or for cars. So something that I would just suggest as an opinion is really look at your setbacks and see how the ingress egress works on the site. Um, the place that I develop a lot is in the Yellowstone ecosystem, and what happens in the dwelling areas of these communities is you have a lot of centerline uses with these 10-foot setbacks, and they're not quite big enough to put a courtyard or have, you know, an activity node or just a little bench, because they're a little bit too small, but they're not big enough to, you know, do—do much. So you end up having the discussion of zero lot lines, and obviously, certain people don't like them, and I understand, because they kind of remove the—the—the buffer. But, I mean, this is a commercial site, so you kind of get into the functionality of the site. So if you're loaded on one side or the other, you end up having a better use on a smaller-scale site, and—and this site seems pretty tight, 7,000 square feet, really tight, actually. Um, I'm just looking at my notes, I'm sorry.
And just a—a quick point of clarification. It's technically went from old town to residential-scale commercial.
Okay.
So that's kind of where the whole rub is in the conversation so far, is is it that scale?
Okay.
It's appropriate?
I'm learning, so—perfect, perfect. Um, I—I do like the concept of having a tasting room plus something else. I mean, having a food—food component, I think, is, uh, something that the Valley is reflecting in their food, and—and Yountville is obviously aware of that. Um, and then, last but not least, I think—I think in terms of foot traffic, uh, I think foot traffic is going to go up, so, uh, the surrounding uses are going to benefit from it, and I think it—it extends your pedestrian, uh, component that, you know, you're really, um, starting to explore on the—the Washington corridor, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Other public comments? Please, don't sit idle now. If we're making a decision tonight, I don't want you to go home and wish you had spoken tomorrow. Anyone else? Before—I just want to make sure, no first timers, and if not, I'll—I'll repeat speakers. You—you're not leaning to get up, you're just leaning to see?
I'm part of the applicant, so I didn't want to make a comment.
You're welcome to—you—you—you're a part of the public, right? Yes.
Yes.
You are. You—you're welcome to speak, and I'll—I'll ask Mr. Estillat to come back up and address some of the concerns that have been brought up, but you're welcome, too.
Hi, my name is Deborah Eagle, and I am Stanley and Helen Chang's general manager for their winery, Heston Vineyards. I am not a resident of Yountville, but I've been working in Napa Valley for the past 15 years. My first tenure in the valley was working with Bob and Margaret Mandavi as the director of their, uh, flagship winery up the street. I then worked with the Trincaro family as the director of their cellar home winery, and, uh, after that, launched a new winery for Bill Harland. I bring that up because I've—I've worked with three very iconic families in the winery and, um, am very pleased and proud to be working with the Changs. I, um, want to just talk about for a minute some of the comments of the neighbors on the north side of the property. My feeling is, um, I only know them by reputation, but Mrs. Gates and, uh, the Linderbeard Family Trust certainly had every opportunity to purchase this property and chose not to. Um, I would, um, like to say that in the market economy we all live in, I would not like to have strong personal points of view, uh, so heavily impact someone's ability to develop a property. The Changs have put out their financial resources to secure this property, have worked very closely with the neighbors and the town council to come up with a property that works for everybody, and I just want to suggest the fact that they have put their resources on the line. The neighbors to the north had every opportunity to do so and did not, and I'd just like that to be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any—a anyone else that would like to speak? First-time speakers? If not, I know Ms. Gates. I'm sure you're interested now.
Okay. Five or six years ago, before I took over this property and moved here, I did try to buy that property, okay? And I called and talked to the town and was told—this is before the—
Just try to stay close.
This is before you rezoned it.
It's your friend, it's not an entity.
This is before you rezoned it. And I was told, "No way." Was I going to get a real estate office in that building whatsoever? Forget it, okay? So I didn't buy it, but I tried and I pursued it. So it wasn't like I didn't try. I was told no. So then I went over here and rented this building because I liked the area. But still, it doesn't seem fair that I get to sit in my desk and look at a seven-foot sign up in front of my window, because as you do, look at the floor plan, and you do look at where their black outline of their building is, which I could go through the very same pamphlet you've got. I can show you that those are indeed in front of my windows, and my windows are that tall. I mean, come on, the seven-foot thing is higher than my windows.
Mary, just for the rec—because we're—the council's being shown a series of photographs and diagrams, but we do not have copies of those, and in order for our record to be complete, if Ms. Gates would be kind of—well, the city clerk gets them, town clerk gets them, and so that we can have those, and they will be part of the record. And I also want to make sure the council, which is aware, this issue is not about a non-property owner, it's about the property owner and the applicant and the town.
Right, and so, thank you for that clarification. And once you're finished with your comments, if you could also supply—you pointed out some of the shade drawings that you, uh, did yourself.
Yes.
If you could, uh, provide those to the town clerk as well, so that we have all of your—your information available.
Absolutely. What I wanted to refer you to is on the pages of the applicant's drawings that he put in—in our agenda today—I'm sorry—in our staff report today. The shadows of his building shows that it notches right in front of my wall, which the picture shows where my windows are in front of the wall. So I—I mean, it is a huge impact. I'm not coming up here and complaining because it isn't going to have a terrible impact on our property. Um, and I—when the Beards are ready to sell, we already have an agreement, I will buy the property, so I will end up a property owner on that property some—at some point. So I think my—my condition—my interests and my concerns are valid. Um, it's the pages where the footprint of the property are blackened.
So can you—can you, uh, identify which rendering you're referring to?
It is—oh, this one's even better. Proposal number four, submittal number four.
Is there an attachment number at the bottom?
Let me look. A2.0.
So that's part of Attachment 6, the second page, I believe.
Okay.
Second page of Attachment 6.
I think it's seven. Look at that black plan on that page.
Wait a minute, we might be looking at a different one.
Yeah, you're on the wrong page.
No, you're on the wrong page.
No, actually—yeah, it's actually Attachment 7, A2.0.
Where did I see that? Okay. All right. If you look at how that building comes right over to that little yellow wall, which you have the picture of, on this rendering here, it notches way past that, and then the sign is smack dab in front of my windows. So nothing—I—I mean, that whole exposure, that side of my building is impacted, all of it. Can I go over there and show you what I'm talking about?
If you're going to walk away from the podium, please take the microphone with you, or actually, we have a laser pointer. Watch out, Samantha.
Here it goes. Can I have you work this?
Push that button.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, so if you look— Okay, so if you look at, this is my wall right here. My windows, one window is right here, and the other window is right here, as you saw in my picture.
That's the extension.
He's notched this building out here, it comes out even further than this drawing, and then this wall comes out. When you look at this rendering here, the first notch comes here, in this one, he's even got the first notch even further out than my little wall right here. And so there's the window. So, and then here, on this black one, on the submittal plan number four, proposed roof plan, it shows how it comes way out here, to about here. And then this comes out, almost to the end of my wall. This, and this part here, seven feet, and of course, these are 14 feet or higher. He says his plate's at 14 feet, if you read the, if you read the fine print. But on top of the plate, of course, is the roof matter, the insulation, and then the little wall he's got up on top of that ceiling, if you look at his current rendering. So, thank you.
Thanks, and if you could just provide the town clerk some of that information you were referring to.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you, appreciate that. Any other repeat commenters? Or first timers, yes, Ms. Beard?
Yes, Linda Beard again.
Bring that down just a little bit.
I actually find it highly insulting that someone say we could have purchased the property ourselves. We actually tried to purchase that property when we owned Beard Plaza, which is now Edward James Court, and we couldn't get the zoning changed at the time to suffice what we were wanting to do. Since then, my father passed away, it'll be a year ago, a week from Friday. We've had a lot going on, estate-wise, with my family, everything else. That's not even a book, and that's really a below-the-belt hit.
If I could interrupt you, I think that the town attorney's point was just that, that it has no bearing on.
It has absolutely no bearing.
The council's not going to consider whether you had the ability or chose to decline or tried to, or anything to do with the property ownership piece, so just, so if you could...
The biggest argument, again, is the shade, the lack of sunlight. It would have been a very easy flip, whether it had been a mere flip or just move it over. It could have happened. And I would really like the council to really, really reevaluate this, maybe not even render a decision today, but to really evaluate what's going on, and look at the height of this place and the length of this place, the, how it affects the commercial building on the corner, the residential building. There's another residence on the other side of Kathleen, the residence behind, which will be affected by parking and a huge wall, too. So it's, there's a lot of us involved. So just, please consider the neighbors.
And I'm going to invite the applicant to address some of those concerns, and if they have specific reasons to not be relocating, or the reason for the location of the building, so we'll ask them to address that specifically.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for you, please. I'm going to think this, Cindy, president.
Sure. Ms. Allen, did you want to speak, please?
Vice mayor, and council members and the town staff. I'm Barbara Allen, we live on Heritage. I'm looking at this whole thing from the very beginning, when they bought the property, they presented their plans to the planning department according to the zoning, according to the rules and regulations. They were all in the confines of what they were allowed to do on this property. And ever since then, of all the discussions and opinions and objections, they've been pulling back, they've been setting them lower, they've been scaling them smaller, giving out the apartment. It is a very challenging lot, and the buyers, the applicants are quality people. They're not going to slap up a building that does not represent this town very well. At the same time, within their allowed zoning allowances, they're doing a very good job to fit in this town, on this lot, and accommodating the neighbors. I don't know what it takes, but I think they're doing a great job and doing the best they can, and I urge you to give them some room to get going with this. Thank you.
Thank you. And actually, Ms. Gates, the vice mayor does have a question of you, if you wouldn't mind coming back up to the podium, so he could ask that question.
I think, just in a bit of a statement that the town attorney made, had to do with the stuff that you brought to us that we hadn't seen before. I've never been in a town council meeting with dueling shade plans. And you said, I did my own shade plan. I wouldn't know how to do my own shade plan.
It's difficult.
Can you explain how you did that? Because I haven't seen it, and I know nobody else has reviewed it, but...
I went on the computer and got a program, so the program does it, I can't...
Does it reflect the shape of the building, or is it a square building, or?
Right, well, I just, I'm not very good at it, I'm not an architect, so I just made squares approximately the sizes of the buildings. I know that their building is much taller in the back than I represented it to be, but I was concerned with what was affecting me primarily, and Kathleen in the back. So I didn't know how to notch the building and make it higher. But all you have to do is say, put your coordinates in where you are, and the program shows where, where the shade goes. I knew right away, when I saw the plans the last time they submitted, that they were incorrect, because I know how the shadow hits the building, and I knew that they weren't showing it correctly. That's why I tried to do something about it, to at least show where the sun comes up, where it goes down, and how it goes over those buildings, and how it would impact the property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming back up for that clarification. Any other members of the public not part of the applicant team? Because I'll be asking them to come back up now. Okay, please, Ms. Esselot, would you please address some of the concerns that have been addressed tonight?
And Mr. Mayor, as, as they come forward and give their final presentation, I would like to remind the council that this is the, this is the opportunity for the applicant to rebut, and that should be actually the last public comments on this item, and then the matter should be closed.
Thank you.
I will try and address the comments that were initially made by Cindy Gates.
And please stay as close to that microphone as you can, thank you.
Is that better?
If you could speak up in your voice possibly, I think that will help.
All right, is that better?
That is better, thank you.
Some of her comments are just not factual, so, other than actually setting them next to our drawings and showing that they are not factual, there's no way of refuting it. So if it comes down to that, then we can do that. But her claim about the wall that has the Heston sign on it, in fact, the picture that she just handed over to the staff here, that wall that's on that picture is already a six-foot-tall wall, and that's the existing wall that is in front of her windows. So this concrete wall that comes out of the front and has the Heston sign on it is a foot taller than that, and is about 15 feet away now from the, where the windows are on, on the Cindy Gates building. So to say that, you know, this now blocks her windows is just not right. That's not what the existing situation is. So the picture that has been presented here by them shows a six-foot wall, our wall is seven-foot, and is 15 feet away from that, those windows in the building. And then she goes on to say that it is 30 feet tall next to her office building. Our sections show that, in fact, at that point, we have a 14-foot-high building, which is the height of the building that's adjacent to it, the Cindy Gates building. So to exaggerate these dimensions just for the sake of effect really derails a conversation about what we've done in terms of accommodating the neighbors over the past three or four months. They have not listened to anything that we've suggested, they've been adamant from get-go. Our arguments in terms of what can be done with this property because of its limitations just falls on deaf ears, as far as they're concerned. The staff report indicates that the site of, the size and the shape of the site is such that the further you move south the building, the less room there is, and more land has to be given up to the driveway because of the trapezoidal shape of the lot. So the north boundary, which is the long side of the property, then has to be given up to just a driveway, and not be able, we cannot use it for the purposes of the building. So as a compromise, what we've done is we've reduced the driveway on the south side to its absolute minimum, which is what the fire department requires. We've taken out the landscaping on either side, and we've thrown all of this to the north in order to increase the setback. And in addition to that, we have now stepped the building back, and it's visible from those graphics which are on the wall, what a dramatic change we've made since the original submittal. But as I say, all of these concessions fall on deaf ears, as far as they're concerned, because they're adamant about getting what they want without addressing what my client and the owners here are trying to achieve on this very restricted and constricted lot. So if it comes to that, you know, all of these diagrams and information that she provides has to be set against ours. The planning department can assess them in, in real time and see the sun shadows, for example, that we've provided are done professionally, not done by somebody who's just learned how to do shading diagrams. It shows the actual building, and it shows the shading throughout the year, not just one specific date at nine o'clock on month of February where the sun is low. So all of these are done just to exaggerate the position that they've taken. They're not realistic. What we've provided is the actual fact, and I resent the insinuation that she says that our drawings are deceptive, and they don't show what's there, and so on. Those are things which the planners would have picked up if they were not correct, they would have said, they're not correct. So I'd like to address the attitude that they take to, towards this project, which is just one of negativity and not trying to come to any kind of understanding. We've given a lot of concessions in this process in order to accommodate and address their needs. They've not, they've given us none. In our meetings, in our changes, in our revisions, they've not come along at all. And consequently, if it comes to the fact that, you know, we have to face these numbers off, I'm willing to do it. But I resent the fact that, you know, she would stand up here and claim that what we have provided to the council and the planning department are misconceptions, and they misconstrue the actual facts which are on, on the site. Other than that, I think I have no other comment, unless you have any questions.
Are there any other final questions of the applicant? Vice mayor?
I know at the last council meeting, we did talk about the concept of flipping the site, and I know you've talked about that before. I assume you've done drawings, I mean, I don't doubt that you have. I assume you don't have any of those for us to see or to sort of an understanding of, you talk about the limitations of the site, and I understand with the trapezoidal shape what that does, but if you took the building and moved it this way, can you better explain, or maybe, I don't want to say better, but, but give a little more detail of why that is unworkable, as you've said?
Well, there were a number of factors. Initially, when we went with the fire department, they preferred to have the driveway on that side of the property. So that became a given when we started this. The condition of the site is such that as, we're limited to where we can put the building, because the parking area that's required at the back of the property is a given. We cannot reduce that in any form or fashion. So that remains, and it blocks the tail end of the site. So we're left with this triangular shape. So as we try and pull the building further down, we come further and further out into the street. So that was a consideration, and at the last council meeting, we were given an indication that, you know, maybe we could come forward about three feet into, into that setback area, which this project does that. Now, there was this one corner of the building that now sticks three foot further into the setback. And then also, we think that from a city planning point of view, an urban design point of view, it is the right way to have this building face into the direction of travel of Washington Street, so that where the rendering is, that aspect of the building can be seen, rather than the private wall of the building, which would be, where it would be, well, there would be less windows on it, and it would be less interesting from the point of view of the city looking at the building. So there were these considerations which led us to put the building where it was. If it was a simple matter of just slipping it, I mean, we're not in conflict with the neighbors to, you know, make them suffer. So if it was a simple matter of just slipping it down, we would have done it four months ago, rather than having to make these revisions over and over and over again to get to a solution which addresses their concerns, but also gives the clients what they were trying to get. So we see it as a compromise solution which achieves both ends.
And you may have another question, but I want to ask a clarifying question, and this may be what you were trying to get at, and some of the members of the public have brought this up. We're not talking about just sliding this building down to the other side, we're talking about actually flipping it so that the tall, flat wall would then be on the south side facing Edward James Parking Lot, and the more designed side of your wall would be facing north. I think that's what people are proposing when they say flip it to the south side, they're not just saying expose the, the unpolished side of the building, for example.
If you look at the plan, the front of the building is actually designed at an angle so as to make maximum use of the triangular shape of the lot. So in order to do that, you have to maintain that angled frontage. To flip it the other way, then it would reverse that, so it would even come further out, it would end up in the middle of the street. So that's not a option to...
Or it moves back in the parcel to the east, and you lose the parking, you say, is that, that's the problem?
Well, you would have to give up the parking then, and we've looked at that, and we've provided drawings to the town to show that any of those options, at the previous meeting, I actually provided, I think there were four versions that showed that if you were tried to do that, the parking in the back simply doesn't work. We end up with, I can't remember, I think it was either four or five parking spaces, and the turnaround wasn't sufficient. So there are many limitations. It's very easy for outsiders who are not involved in the intricacies of this design to just say, well, you know, why don't they flip it, or why don't they move it, or why don't they? Once you get involved, it's very tight, very limited in terms of options that are available. Otherwise, as I say, it would have been much easier for me to, saved me a lot of work not to have to go through this process of revisions. I would have done it that first meeting and said, well, here it is, you know, we've slipped it down, and now we, you know, we're done. So there is a reason why we fought for this design, because there are a lot of positive things about the way it's done. And I think what we've done in terms of concessions and revisions should adequately address their concerns. What they, what they say about not getting sunlight ever, et cetera, that is just not true. The sun diagrams that we provided show that the worst situation is in the middle of December, and after that, the sun shadows are correctly shown that they get the sun that they get now. And the existing trees that are there and have been there forever are higher now than the wall that we have along the side at the five-foot setback. And they've been there, and they've cast shadows, and there's been no complaint about it over these years. Now, all of a sudden, it has become an issue.
Okay, I think the vice mayor has another follow-up.
Yeah, and Bob, now that you've got these up, that was not my question, but thank you anyway. I want to try to understand a little bit more of the difference between submittal three and four, and I think attachment six, is that, submittal three and attachment seven is submittal four, am I correct on that?
And there is the revision summary that shows some of the direct changes.
Bob, is that right?
I'm looking for my numbers.
That's correct.
Okay. Is there any way that you can show drawing A.3.1 that's from Submittal Three? Bob?
A.3.1?
A.3.1 and Attachment Six.
Yep. Let me get to this.
Okay, so that one. This is the view from the north side and what I see on the very right side of the page is you've done an outline of the commercial building that's right next door where the real estate office is.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
And then I... You don't necessarily have to flip back and forth. I guess I'm trying to understand on Three and Four, I know you've changed the units from two residential units to one residential unit, but you also increased the commercial space a little bit, not much, on the second one. And it does seem like there's a, if I look, is this, is this Attachment Six?
Yeah, just in large.
Okay, thank you. I mean, obviously, if we exclude that, I have a feeling that that sign is, we're not going to have the whole project hinge on that one sign that juts out there. There was other ways we could probably come up with a decent little sign that could show. Is if that piece of that is possible to reduce, then a lot of, a lot of that building next door can see out and does have at least some view. I don't know that it's reasonable to say that you should preserve 100% of your view no matter what, but if I go to Submittal Four, that building coming forth just even a couple of feet does seem to make a little bit of a difference. Are you all fine with Submittal Three? Are you really preferring Submittal Four?
Well, the reason, we did Submittal Three and we met with the neighbors and they were adamant about not accepting it. So what we tried to do in Submittal Four by reducing the units and being able to replan it over the commercial area, we pulled it away another two foot six.
On top.
On top. So the setback on the second floor, instead of eight feet, it became 10 foot six. So the intent was to try and, again, you know, accommodate them by doing that and moving the building back. The point that should be made about the Cindy Gates Building is that it's a small building and it has windows on three sides. And we're, you know, discussing one window here, which is on the right-hand corner of that elevation. So it has, what we're proposing, has no effect on the window which is closer to the street. It has no effect on her signage at all. And if the rendering... Bob, could you put the rendering off for one second? This drawing before actually shows the profile of the Cindy Gates Building as against ours, but...
Was it on the podium? There we go.
There you go. Push the button and push it.
So essentially, this Cindy Gates Building is here. And this is where her sign would be. This is one of her windows would be. And then the second window is here and there is a six-foot wall which is already on the property and is attached to their building and that's at this height here. So to say that, you know, this building is going to completely engulf her view and her sign and her windows is just not correct. And that's apparent, looking at the site plans.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? I know we have, the public hearing is closed and I believe we're, if you'd like to continue making a comment as part of the rebuttal, please.
Good evening. My name is Stanley Chen. I represent the family trust that owns the property and the Heston Minions. It appears there is gross misunderstanding of some of the concerns of the neighbors. It appears that they actually haven't studied the revised revisions that we have made. We have, Pharoah and I have met on numerous occasions to address the neighbors' concerns and we have addressed the idea of flipping the building, so to speak, to the south side and put the driveway on the north side. We have explored that more than twice to see what, if there is any way that we can do that. And we have actually, Pharoah and I, in the last two months have met on numerous occasions to try to find ways to address the concerns of our neighbors. And frankly, we've bent over backwards to try to come up with solutions and we have exhausted ways of trying to do that. And bending over backwards so many times, the only side benefit is I've become pretty good at some yoga poses. We have been coming, my wife Helen and I, we've been coming to Yountville for 33 years. We, I got Nora when she was very young, she's still very young. And in recent, last couple of years, we've been coming here on the average of once to twice a week. And that's actually very frequent. Actually, I think a few times, we actually came to Yountville four times in a week to dine here. And we love this town. We want to make a contribution to the town and we're confident that we can. And the architecture, the architecture of this new building, we believe will enhance the property values of our neighbors rather than to devalue it. And the shadow analysis that we have done, they're professionally done. And this is something that one cannot argue. Shadow analysis is shadow analysis. I think there is a misunderstanding. I don't think the neighbors actually have studied our shadow analysis of the new designs. I think the most qualified people to speak on that would be the staff of the town because they have studied that carefully and that they are professionally done. As to the site, our short wall blocking the line of sight of Ms. Gates' window, we disagree. We don't think, realistically, I don't think that she has actually studied the height and position of that wall and it does not actually block her view at all. She would still have pretty much full view of the street of Washington. And again, if there is anything that we can do, we have already done it. And short of actually making the building much smaller, flipping it to the south side, and we just want to make that clear to the council members, Mr. Mayor, and we hope that you would understand and have the, really, the town staff because they are the experts. They have spent, I would imagine, probably tens of hours, if not hundreds of hours, on the project already, to which we're deeply appreciative. And we think that really this sort of disagreements as to shadow analysis, sight of, line of sight, all that really is something that is, that is very scientific. It's not something that is subjective. And if I can just really, we put our confidence in the, in the town staff members and we believe that they are perfectly competent in the way they have addressed our project and we appreciate the consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, I'm going to conclude the rebuttal portion of this hearing and return the discussion to council for deliberation and potential action. So I'll invite Councilmember Mueller to start off with her thoughts.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to give a little history to everybody about how the council usually, what we have to deal with and how we come to these decisions. This is a public hearing, so in terms of that, we are the planning commissioners. In some of our earlier discussions, we were actually town council members. So when we're town council members, we're usually performing legislative acts. We're talking about taxes. Are we going to raise taxes, things like that? In this capacity, we are the planning commission. And in that regard, we are making quasi-judicial decisions. How would a judge make these types of decisions if all, both sides got up and presented their arguments? So that's how I'm approaching this. And first, I'd like to say that I really thank the applicant and the neighbors for taking the time to get together and discussing this. Often, they can come to some agreement and make some mitigation and I think that's been done here. Can everything get satisfied? You know, sometimes it can, but sometimes it can't. So that's where we, as making quasi-judicial decisions, have to render a decision here. So I think that there has been very significant mitigation. Very key component is looking at the green line over here that has changed throughout the project. And another very important part that came up to me that is carrying a lot of weight with my decision is what the fire department. I usually come down on the side of safety when I have to make decisions. If the fire department's preference, and I can, without them here, I'm pretty sure I can understand why they're making a preference for the driveway on that, on that side versus the north side. So with that being said, I've also looked carefully at the ordinance and what we also have to do in our judicial capacity is make findings. It'd be great if I could just say, "Oh, I don't like this" or "I do like that," but I have to make findings to support our ordinances. And with each one of the findings that the staff has put together, I will say that I concur with all of those. So that is generally the basis of the decision, that I would support Option Three or Option Four, this move forward. So in terms of that decision, I think I have a little more latitude in which one because they're pretty similar. I kind of like Option Four. I'm really not opposed to Option Three. The reasons I have a preference for Option Four, although it's small, there is more retail and everyone knows I love, any additional retail I can get. The apartment space that's been changed, I like that too. I think it's great that we have an owner business here. The owner wants to stay here. I'm sure the owner is going to have a lot of influence over how the businesses run. We'd be having a totally different discussion if this was Starbucks or something like that. So I think that's great, how Yountville can still attract these owner-occupied type, even though it may not be full-time businesses. So, and having a little more square foot in a single apartment, I think that's a positive. I think the concessions that you've made with the second-story setback are very significant and they're preferable in Option Four, so I like that one. The mechanical, I just kind of like that design, whether the mechanical goes in the middle, in the middle with a two-foot parquet, if I have that right, is okay. Either way, I just like the design aspect of Option Four, not that it necessarily houses that. So I can, you know, how it's written right now is fine, but I think as Bob said too, once he really saw the rendering, it made a lot of difference, so. And I think Option Four has a lot of additional benefit in terms of having one additional commercial parking space. In most towns, that's really not much at all, but in Yountville, we all know, every space counts. And in terms of the use, I would also favor the use as proposed in the ordinance.
Thank you for remembering to cover that part I was going to ask you. So just to get clarification, at this time, you're proposing support of Option Four and the, all the conditions as are presented in the staff report in the ordinance. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Dornbecker?
Thank you. It's very difficult to see some changes come to Yountville. On the other hand, I do believe that the, our staff, I trust our staff, and in reading the conclusion of the staff report, it says that the staff believes that the applicant has fully mitigated the impacts of the earlier submittal that resulted in increased shading and loss of light and sunshine to the adjacent dwelling. I, the shade studies were an important piece that I wanted to really look at and see. I think that the applicants have definitely done everything they can to deal with the size of a very small lot to make it work. And even though I was at first in favor of flipping the driveway, I understand that that costs so much space that it really diminishes what can be built on the, on the property. And so in conclusion, I feel that I'm going to, I am going to support the use and the design of Option Number Four as it has been put forward. And I want to say thank you so much for going to the effort of doing this and trying to make everyone happy. It would be a really wonderful world if we could make everyone happy about everything all the time. I'd really like that. And I wish that we could wave a magic wand and make the site perfect so that we wouldn't have to make these kinds of adjustments. But I feel that it is going to be a wonderful business. I love the design and I wish you great success.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick comments before I get to, I guess, what I truly think. Somebody asked me recently how things are going in Yountville. I said, "They're nice and quiet." And I said, "But whenever I say that, it always seems to change very quickly." And I see Mr. Jenny back there. This probably brings up memories for you too, I have a feeling. But these are the, I think these are the hardest nights because we've got friends and neighbors who are on one side and friends and neighbors who are on the other side. And usually, we do the best job of making everybody unhappy and I'm not sure, I think as Marita said, there's never anything perfect. I'm always surprised, and maybe I should be pleasantly surprised, that when somebody comes with a project like this and the architecture is kind of out there, which I personally love but always kind of wonder about, that never seems to be the issue. And I think that actually says something very positive about Yountville. I, I do think that, especially when I look at the drawings on the wall, which shows the green, is I do think that plans have changed fairly substantially over time. And I believe from what I see, that in general, that the impacts have been minimized, not erased, but minimized on the project, the houses, the house and the business to the north. Main request I would have to support Number Four is where it says Heston up there and it's got that little thing that's jutting out there. I personally find that unnecessary. I think you just shave that guy right off and put the, put the name Heston on the other concrete part and it's going to open up, even if it's a foot or two of view and tiny bit of sun into that one window, I think that would be very helpful. And I know it's a small thing, but I, like I said, I don't think the whole project should hinge on that, but I think it would help. I do think the plan is better with one unit. If you all are going to use that, that's, you know, that's great. I think we should, I'm sure it says in there because we've had people who have rented so-called residential units before for non-residential purposes. I assume that that's in the conditions that that has to occur. It cannot be used for office space because you do have a very, very small, tight space. And I would say on the use permit, that I actually believe the use permit is actually quite restrictive. We talk about four special events per year, no food preparation on site, no food to be used as part of the daily wine tasting use. I'm not sure if that's a condition. I'm not sure if that's a condition, Bob, but I didn't look for that specifically. No service outdoors. I do not agree, as I never have, with wine tasting rooms being open until 9:00 PM. I think it should be 6:00 PM, and I think that should be universal in town, but I lose on that every single time. So that's my only concern with the use permit. I think otherwise, the use permit is actually quite restrictive, which I think is positive. It'll have as little impact on the fact this is a residential bordered project. So that's my only comments. If you could please just shave off that little wall there, I think that would be helpful.
Thank you for your comments. And I echo the vice mayor's point about the fact that this is one of the most challenging types of decisions that we have to make, because we are dealing with people that we live next to, play botchy with, socialize with, and it really is difficult. But at the same time, you don't elect us to sit up here and just make the easy decisions. We have to make the difficult ones as well. And I'm encouraged, as was brought up in the public hearing portion, that the quality of the project's not really a question. I don't think we've ever doubted that there would be a quality project that comes of this. It really comes down to the uniqueness of this parcel and the location of the building. And also, that was brought up, the fact that this was rezoned residential scale commercial, I remember that was a relatively easy decision by the council, because it seemed completely inconsistent with Washington Street to have this a residential property. And there was very little, if I recall correctly, opposition to the idea. That meant it was going to be developed at some point and in some way. And we run across this problem every time we are dealing with the border of residential and residential scale commercial or commercial. There is an impact. There is always going to be an impact when you rent or own a property adjacent to a commercial corridor. So that's the biggest struggle that we've been having, is trying to figure out how to mitigate those negative impacts on the residential neighborhood. And I came into tonight really not having an idea of where I was going to land on this, and I appreciate everybody's discourse. I'm sorry that it got to be a little more contentious than is normal in this room, but I understand it's because people are passionate about their positions. It is a very challenging space, and there are a couple of things that stand out for me in that we need, if we're going to accept this as a commercial property and a business, we have to allow that business to be viable. And to be viable, we have to allow a legitimate amount of retail space to be built and to operate. So that was one of my driving concerns about why is the building the size it is? And not so much even the location of it, but does it need to be as big as it is? And we've gone around and around in some of the iterations about this project, about the fact that it needs to be the size that it is, and they have even reduced some of the other elements of this project in order to retain the commercial space, given up some landscaping, given up some of the other items on the site to do that. And I'm just, I want to make sure that I go through all of my points here. The other kind of key component for me was, when I read through the conditions, and it refers to the fire department, and they are stating that, and this is item 31 in the conditions, that the location of the, the location, I'm going to paraphrase this, of the building shall be within 250 feet of a fire hydrant. That's basically what they're saying here. So I believe that that is their driving concern about where the, where the fireplace, or where the driveway is and where the building is, is because they're looking at it, they don't care what the building looks like, they don't care how it's being used, they want to know, how can they maintain public safety on that site? And so I'm, I'm going to respect their position on that. It isn't as simple as sliding this building to the south end, or flipping it and doing a mirror image on the south end. I know town staff, I know the applicant, has tried all those iterations, and the problem is, as soon as you do that, you lose one, two, or more of the other requirements on that site. Parking and access, pedestrian and vehicle access to the site and the front setback are more severely impacted. But the parking was one of the deal breakers for me. We already have issues with parking on the retail corridor as well as adjacent. And if we were to allow this or any other business to under-satisfy their parking requirement, would just be a disservice to the neighbors. So one thing that I don't know, and I'll ask the town attorney if, if we can add a condition, because one of the biggest concerns from the discussion tonight is the accuracy of the location of the building, the height of the building, the impact on the neighbors, especially the front property with the real estate office. If a condition can be added that story polls are provided, and upon confirmation of the accuracy of the location and height, therefore confirming the impacts that we might be using to render our decision, is that acceptable as a condition? Or would we potentially need to continue the item without a vote until we have the ability, if the council agrees, to have a story poll review?
Mr. Mayor, members of the town council, I don't think you need to continue the matter, because if the council takes action, it is with direction to staff to follow up on that point. If for some reason that the results of those studies or the plans are inconsistent with the council's direction, then we would have to bring that back to you.
And how would that be brought back? You just bring it up at a next available meeting date and have a review of the conditions that were approved?
That is correct. Well, we'd also have to give notice, obviously, to the applicant. Staff, staff has done its analysis, bases in large part their analysis upon the information that's presented by the applicant and his architect. But if for some reason, you know, that is not accurate, then we'd bring it back.
Okay. Thank you. So just to conclude my point, my comments, this is a very, it's a delicate project or delicate discussion, but I do feel that the broader benefit to the town is, is being achieved by accepting this project. While there is certainly, there has been a concern by the entire council that the negative impacts on the neighbors. I consider this a situation where there is always going to be a difficult merging of the residential corridor with the commercial corridor. That's the nature of owning or renting property adjacent to that commercial corridor. We continue to try to mitigate those negative impacts, but in some cases, as I am willing to do tonight, I'm willing to accept the benefits and consider them outweighing some of the potential negative impacts. So with that, is there a motion? And in that motion, I would ask that whomever makes that motion to be specific, if, as the vice mayor stated, he's looking to modify the conditions, if that is to be added, if someone else is perfectly accepting the project as submitted, that may be the motion as well. And if, so is there action to be taken?
I'll try the first motion. We'll see if we have any substitute motions, but I would move that we approve, I just flipped the page, let me get the ordinance. Ordinance number...
It's actually resolution...
Resolution number, thank you. Now that I'm on the page, we're not fascinating laws, we are judges. Thank you. Resolution number 3017-12, approving the master development plan, including design review and use permit for Heston Vineyards mixed commercial residential structure for wine tasting, cookware, retail, and residential uses. As stated, was there anything, I couldn't find anything unique to option three or four, Bob? Was that...
What you may want to do, if I may, Mr. Mayor, is indicate, and that the design be consistent with the plans as submitted for, if it's option four.
And, thank you. That would be, and the designs be consistent with, with option four.
And before I ask for a second, what I would also ask, Councilmember Mueller, as the motioner, staff's recommendation is to accept option four with the one change of the mechanical room tower being replaced by the sensor located roof-mounted unit with screening. Are you interested in adding that to your motion or not?
I could interject. That's option three, and I had explained earlier that when we saw the rendering of option four, there was a concern about, in the elevations, there are orthographic projections, and the tower looked more dominating than it ended up appearing in their rendering, and option four was less of a concern.
So when you say less of a concern, is staff's recommendation that we accept option four as submitted?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, I'm sorry, your motion, is it to accept option four as submitted?
It is.
Is there, as the town attorney so eloquently stated my poorly stated point about requiring, you said it better.
Well, additionally, requiring that if there is any information, design element, shading element that has been presented to the town council and to, and our staff as part of this public hearing, that if it is inconsistent with the materials presented to the town council, that the matter be referred back to the town council for further review on the conditions as presented. In other words, what they're, what they're showing you is accurate.
Right.
If it's not, we'll bring it back. That's the, the first one is the lawyer fancy talk, the second one is the more common element.
Well, I don't know if I even need that information, because I think that that's going to be...
Well, I had, I had asked for that, I had asked for that, because there was some concern about the accuracy. If we are accepting, if the vote is to accept this as presented, that was just an extra check of the accuracy, so that we're, we're getting what we're saying that we're approving, is, was my point.
Can I ask for clarification?
Yeah, we do have a motion. We haven't had a second yet. If we get a second on this, then we can have discussion about that motion, or...
Well...
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
My concern about what you just suggested is, is at what point is that in effect? I mean, can you say it's been built and, you know, oh, this shade doesn't look exactly the way I thought it was going? I mean, I don't understand the practical nature of what you just said.
If I could, I think what staff will really be focusing on in this particular case is making sure that the initial foundation and all of the various components are in the right location, not off a foot, not, and we will do that, you know, that will be something, we, I won't say, because in this community, we have some things that were not built where they were supposed to be built.
Okay.
Some, I think intentionally, and some completely accidentally. But we will really be focused and make sure that the, you know, where the foundation, where a perimeter wall are all set, so that we make sure that the project is built in the manner in which it was represented to the council.
And I was asking for that to be added to the conditions, so that, because it's a very precise and delicate concern, that we are approving the conditions as they are presented to us, we want to just make sure that those are accurate.
Mr. Mayor, members of the town council, whether you add that or not, staff is going to do that anyway.
Understood.
But I understand the concern that what they are presenting, what the applicant is presenting, they have to adhere to it by every inch, no pun intended, of their design and development.
And it's up to the motioner to add that additional condition or not?
I'll just go with, I'll just go with the motion as I presented, and there's substitute motion, we can hear that, so.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Can I, can I propose an amendment to the motion?
May.
I would like to propose an amendment to the motion, keep the motion as it stands, with the only change being to remove the small wall that says Heston Vineyards as a condition of approval, to remove that, and the rest of the motion stands.
Is that a substitute motion or an amendment to a motion?
Well, that is, that's not a substitute motion, that's a request for amendment to the motion. Your amendment is to remove the wall entirely as opposed to reduce it, because there was some discussion about lowering that wall.
The one that says Heston on it?
Yes, sir.
My motion was, my amendment was to remove that small wall right there that's being pointed to entirely.
The extension beyond the main building?
Just the extension. That's it. Yes, that's my amendment.
So the current motion and second is, still stands with that amendment, and the original motioner has the ability to not accept that? Is that accurate?
That is correct. The maker of the motion can accept the recommended amendment. If the maker of the motion, the second of the motion does, do not accept that, then you either have further discussion or vote on the initial motion, and then go from there.
So you would need to approve that amendment, Councilmember Mueller?
I, I request that my original motion stand. I don't wish to accept an amendment this time.
Fair enough. And then there'll be a vote on that first motion, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so if we could have a roll call vote on, on the first motion not including the amendment?
Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chilton?
Yes.
Mayor Dunbar?
Yes.
Record reflect, Councilmember Hall is excused.
So what we have just done is accepted submittal four, option four, as it stands, both in the architectural drawings, location, as well as the use conditions. I appreciate, as the entire council does, everyone's participation and involvement in this, we are getting. So with that, I do appreciate the concessions that were made on behalf of the concerns of our neighbors. Also, though, let's not forget that we're all welcoming you officially to Yountville and wish you the best. Thank you very much. I think what I'd like to do is, is offer council a five-minute break. So I will call... Chicho Use Permit, 6770 Washington Street, considering a request to modify the existing sign that is painted on the front of the building, Market. Staff report, please.
As you stated, this is a request by Frank Ultamura to paint the Market sign that's shown here on this graphic at the top of the building, extending across the top of the building at 6770 Washington Street. The building's recently been repainted, but the applicant is requesting the option in the future to paint out the Market sign. This application for staff was an exercise in researching the available record, cannot claim that we completely found everything available, every piece of information available that would indicate the total history of the sign on this building, but I will cover the parts we did find in the record. The building was constructed in 1924. The Ton Naskia Market was established in 1916 in that building, or in Yountville in 1916, and the building served as a home for that business until 83. The Market was a tenant, and during that time, there was a, let me flip over to this This is a historic resources inventory sheet that was completed in 1978 on this building, and it shows at that time, the Market sign existed when it was at Ton Naskia Market. This is the earliest verification of the sign being present on the building, not necessarily the earliest date, though. It's just the earliest evidence we found. There's, in the record, notes from a ZDRB meeting back in 1990... 1992. There was a sign permit approval for a sign when the Market changed over to Yountville Market and Carryout Cafe, noting the existence of the Market sign, of course, back in, still on the building at that time. And in the record, it stated that the town council determined that this Market sign is a historical element that need not be counted as a sign as part of the sign permit for that Yountville Market and Carryout Cafe. However, we researched back as far as 1965, but could not find in the town council records any official declaration of that historic designation of that sign. It was just a reference in a ZDRB meeting that was made back in 92. The sign was painted out subsequently to that, and we presume, without authorization, having been just recognized, at least in that ZDRB meeting, as declaring it a historic sign. It was reestablished in 1996, when a use permit approval was sought to establish Sally Gordon's Restaurant, Murray and Gordon's was the application, or Murray and Gordon. And they specifically wanted to reestablish the Market sign at that time, and there was a statement at that time by the then-mayor Mary Lou Holt, who asked that they, if it was specifically their intent that the Market sign be brought back, and they declared that that was part of their plan. So, that was part of the approved proposal at that time, to reestablish the Market sign. The use permit for that contained a condition of approval that said, "No exterior alterations to the building are approved, except the repainting of Market across the upper facade of the building in the same location as the previous lettering." And Sally noted that her, quoted in here, that her husband volunteered to follow the letters very closely, the original letters. So, that was a condition that noted it would be reinstated on the sign on the building, but that itself was not a historic designation by council either. It was just a confirmation that that was part of their proposal to reestablish that sign, and that they included that as, that's the only exterior alteration that can be made to the building. So, it continued with the sign up there, they, and then that Gordon's Cafe ceased operating in the mid 2000s, mid 20, 2004, or thereabouts, '05. And, and then the building has been taken over to be reopened as Chichio by Frank Altamira, and, and he's before you with a request to have the option to paint over the sign. Now, the, earlier, we had brought this to the ZDRB and for their recommendation, and their consensus was that the, the council had previously deemed the sign historic by the statements available to them in the record, and, but they did say that they would need an independent third-party evaluation by a historic professional that the sign was not an integral part of the building before they could recommend that it be removed. So, we've, on other buildings, had specialists that, architectural historians comment, the farmhouse is one example, and produce a report, and that's what they were suggesting. In this case, if it's to be removed, or prior to it being allowed to be removed, that confirming it is not a historic element. Nevertheless, the, what is, information is available in the record does not preclude the, the council tonight from making a determination that the sign is historic. And some of the evidence, or some of the purpose statements in the Old Town Commercial Zoning District, is that it's unique among the commercial districts in that it's intended to reflect Yountville's early period of development, and the zoning ordinance states that one intent is to promote the preservation of the historic character of this part of Old Town, maintenance and rehabilitation of those existing structures that embody this character are encouraged. So, that would appear to be applicable to this property and the sign on it. The, the Market that was in there was, was a longstanding business in operation for a period of 67 years until, and then its successors, Yountville Market, Katz and Company, and Murray and Gordon. Also, the building that it's in, in the inventory that I, this document on the screen, it states that these wood false-front buildings constructed in Napa County in the early 20th century house markets, which may establish a broader regional significance based on the type of architecture the sign is on. So, there's also a note in the staff report that the sign recalls, because of that, the old architecture and the sign that's in keeping with the type of building that the, that architecture and the use it housed were typically markets, that it contributes to earlier era of Yountville and, and the town charm. The staff report further concludes later on that one of the issues brought up at the ZDRB meeting, a concern by the applicant is that the Market sign would promote confusion to the use of it as a restaurant, which will be, Chichio opened as a restaurant. And it's pointed out in the staff report that Gordon's Cafe operated for quite some time with, without that confusion, and that if Chichio's sign were clear that it was a restaurant, and it was unambiguous that it was a restaurant or cafe, or whatever they're going to call it, that would probably mitigate the confusion with the Market sign. And such signs are elsewhere in the valley where you have a use that is not compat, or conforming with the sign, such as Keller's in St. Helena is a restaurant now, is a hardware store, or, or meat store, I should say, and Taylor's Refresher has, is now, has another sign, Gott's Roadside, and there's not that confusion. So, staff's recommendation is retaining the Market sign, based on its contribution as a historical component to that building and Yountville.
Thank you. Any questions about the staff report? Vice Mayor, no?
There are pictures in the staff report that you haven't shown, at least in our packet, that show the building at times prior to this picture, that clearly do not have Market on there. Can you talk about that?
Well, I don't know. We found these pictures, and I can't really date some of them. These are when it was a Market, and perhaps at some point when it was, I can't pronounce his name, Tasa, Tenasa. Tenasa, it may have gone for some years without a Market sign across the top. Obviously, back in the 20s. And then we get into, this is when it was Yountville Market, and after, I guess Sally, just prior to Sally. Shows it with it on there. So, yeah, these pictures do show it without the sign on there, but it's, it's difficult to determine. Here it is in the 20s without the sign, according to this caption, but when it went on the building is, we don't know that.
I'd like to follow up your question. The first...
Thank you.
...year it wa, it's been shown to exist was?
The first found photograph was the historic inventory, resources inventory, that they go out and take a photo to include with the inventory, and that was done in 78, and it had, that's the earliest known photo of it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Note that I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing for this item, and welcome the applicant to make a presentation.
Hello, everybody.
If you could just kind of pull that microphone over you. Thank you.
My name's Frank Altamira. Yeah, I live at 6871 Jefferson Street, here in Yountville, and my wife and boys are going to be the one opening up a small Italian pizzeria in Chichio at 6770 Washington Street. I think my main reason coming up here, it's not really to start painting over the sign or anything immediately, but I think that it's been kind of misconstrued, that it's historical, and I think that we're kind of confusing history from the 70s, even 80s, up to 96, as being the historical feeling of the building. The building itself, I think, was built 1916, or something like that, and then the older pictures of it from the 20s and 30s do not have any of the signage like that at all. They had a sign coming out from the building, and the earliest that we can figure any was there was maybe sometime in the mid 70s, that that was painted on there, the large Market sign. The historical reference to the signs in 92, and I'm worried, I'm concerned because it's, I know terms of the conditional use permit that we have is calling the sign "historical," and I just did not like that wordage in there, because we, I don't think there's anything that's been shown that it is historical at all. And the only time it was talked about in 92 was a reference to 92, as a sign not counting as allowable sign footage as a historical element, when Katz and Company came in to open up the Market there, and the existing sign was only documented to 1970s by the staff. That's as far back as they can even find it. The Market sign itself then was actually painted over in 92, without anyone from the council saying anything, or there was any historical relevance to it, anything whatsoever. And Adalian Market was seeking to also, this is in 96, Murray and Gordon sought approval of the use permit amendment to operate a deli and a market from the site, and seeking to reestablish the Market sign. So, they didn't go in to actually open it as a cafe or restaurant. It was done to be as a Market, and that's why they wanted the Market sign reinstalled up on top there in that size. And then in the next paragraph below, on your page 2 of 4, it does say that indeed the statements above tend to imply that repainting of the sign was a voluntary action rather than a council directive. In addition, it does not appear that the council required the repainting of the sign at any time between 92 and when it was removed in a 96, at the time of application. And then the sign was repainted for Gordon's Market in 1996. There's another element to it that I think that, when I was reading down farther, which I wasn't really aware of, it, this is on the Old Town Commercial Zoning District, and it says, "The district is unique amongst the town's three commercial district, and is intend to reflect Yountville's early period of development from circa 1870 to 1920." And I think if we're really going to be historically accurate or correct, and really lean everything on this building as being a historical sign, it should be back in the period where there actually are pictures of it in the 1920s and 30s, when it did not have a sign painted on there. And I think the Market sign was added, like I said, in the 70s through the 80s, taken off in the 90s, went back in the 96, and I think it's something that people like to think was on the building in the old days, because it gives them a feeling that's like an old building. But in reality, if you're trying to be accurate with the history of it, we have actual photos that show it's not. So, there's really no historical element to that. Let's see. I really, I think there's been a little misconception, too, that, because I know that some people sent some emails and turned things around, that we're planning on painting over the Market sign, putting a big restaurant sign up there, or something like that, but that's not the case at all. I don't even know if we're going to remove that Market sign. We've been running into people that have been coming by, thinking it's a Market, parking in the parking lot and coming in to get cigarettes, and they see it's under construction and thinking it's going to be a Market, but it's actually not. So, we have to send them down to Street Ranch Market, and that's usually what we end up doing. Let's see, let's see, the Old Town Commercial... I think that, that's really basically it. I don't really feel like there's anything historical that's tying that sign to the building. Again, I think it's only, was painted up there as a marketing tool in the 70s to make it look like the cute Old Town Market, and that was it. And so now I think we're kind of being stuck with it, and people saying it's historical, because I think that what's important is that the sign was not, could be taken off as far as 92, it was not considered historical. It was only being counted as the square footage that would be allowed to stay on there when Katz was trying to put a Market sign up, and that this had to go through the board here, heard in 1996, in order to have the sign painted again and put up there at that size. And in fact, I know we alluded back to Mary Lou Holt talking about it and stuff, but in the comments, the comments at the time, where Sally Gordon, applicant, said a restaurant was not their intention, but to comply with the alcoholic beverage control, they were required to serve breakfast, lunch, and dinner. Mayor Holt, Mayor Holt asked if there was any possibility that the Yountville Market sign could be brought back. The applicant said yes, that it was their plan. Mary Lou Holt, she knew that they had mentioned Market, but didn't get the feeling that it would be a Yountville Market again, and was glad to hear that it would be. And so, I think that the main reason the Market sign was going up there is because they were opening a Market. It was not for a cafe, and to have a large Market sign when you're opening a Market's pretty nice to have. I agree with that. So, I think my only thing I'm really even up here talking about is that, if, if it does seem to become confusing, which it seems to be getting already, is that the Market sign that's been deemed historical really is not historical, and it's a fairly recent addition, and it's a history of maybe the 70s or 80s, maybe up to nine, and then 92, there's nothing on there, no one said anything about, and then they wanted to paint it again on in 96, and I'm kind of being stuck with that rule that was done in 1996, like it's something historical. And I just don't, I just can't get that feeling. If it was on there in the 20s and 30s, the old pictures, it's historical, it's done, it's been on there for a long time. But I think it's just people's, the way they were doing stuff in the 70s, 80s, or whatever, and that they wanted to bring it back in 96, because they were opening a Market, and it's a big, big sign. So, that's it. So, I'll just be here if you need questions or something, so.
Any specific questions of the applicant, Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I mean, this historical sign...
Could you just pull your microphone around?
So, I just want to get a clarification of what your plans are. I mean, do you like the Market sign? Do you really dislike it? I mean, I definitely have my...
I don't mind it, honestly, right now. It's, but I, I think what it is, is that in the future, or if it becomes a problem with people dropping things off, and it's already getting billed as Chichio Market, and they're getting it mixed up a little bit with Market up in St. Helena, because people are looking for Market Restaurant, and it's, that is just so prominent. That sign, the Market sign, is about five times bigger than what we're allowed to have on the building, and for it to have a sign that's, it's almost 90 square feet of sign, it's huge. And that's, when you look at the picture even, or when you drive by, that's the thing you see. It says Market, which is okay if it's a Market, but it's becoming, that's why I didn't really bring it up or even think about before, but it's becoming a bit confusing with us trying to open a restaurant, and it says Market on the damn thing, and that's the only thing. And I may, we may keep it on there if it doesn't, if it doesn't, but I just wanted that historical connotation, everybody saying, oh, it's historical, it's got to stay, when it's really not. I didn't want somebody just saying something just to be saying it, when there's really, we have nothing on it that says it's historical. And 96 is the first time, that's what we're living with, so.
So, that's really your point, is that you just have an issue with the word "historical." You're not going to get ready to, like...
No.
Rush out there with paint, because it looks like it's been painted in a little line, yeah.
We just painted the damn thing. No, we just painted it. And the thing is, if it's, goes fine, everything's going well, fine, no big deal, but I don't want to be saddled with that and say we can never take it off, if it does start creating a problem. And we were not talking about putting any of our own signs up there or doing anything, is just build a paint over that huge Market sign, which again is five times bigger than anything we can do.
So, it might take a while before you realize it's a problem. Let me ask you one more question.
Right.
Would it, how would you feel about, you know, if it really became a problem down the road, coming back and talking to us about this issue then?
Well, I don't know.
If we could resolve the historical thing.
Well, I think if it's not denoted as being historical, then that probably, that problem won't even arise. I think what it is, is saying that you want to keep it on there, and it's in the use permit, or certificate of compliance, or whatever the hell you call it, as being a historical element, when it's really not. And that's what I'm concerned about.
Okay. I think I've got that.
That part. That's the one that's bothering me, is we can't paint over it if we ever want to, because they're saying it's considered historical, but I don't think it really is. So, I don't think there's been any proof that it really is. The older pictures, if you want to really be historical and keep it, like you're saying, in that end of town from the 1870s, 1920s, then you don't start changing the architectural form of it to the 70s, 80s, and 90s, because people think it's cute, because it says Market, it looks like an old building. it's cute because it says Market and looks like an old building. And the old building's not gonna change, we're not changing anything else. We've tried to do everything we can inside of it with the building itself. We've spent a fortune on this stupid thing and just to make it look like it did. And actually, when you walk inside now, we've got the old floors all redone, the beadboards back up, the ceilings, I mean, everything's been, we've spent quite a bit. And it's kind of like the same thinking we did on the house we have on the corner of Jefferson and Madison. It was to get the old pictures from Wickles House when it was like a year old and brought everything back. And at first, you know, people said, well, gee, the railing is not the same as it's there. But when you looked at the old photographs from one year old, that's exactly what the railing was. So it's not what, I don't think we should be basing history on what we think it should be or what we remember because that's a little bit selective and a little bit sentimental. I think we actually go to more of the facts of what it really was. And I think that when you look at the old photographs, which we're very lucky to have of the Market in the twenties and thirties, that it did not have that on there. And that was just a later configuration of that front face. So that's, that's what it is. But we're not, again, painting over it, putting a big Chicho up there, a restaurant or anything else, not doing anything. It's just, it's a little bit deceiving the way it is, especially the size of it. If it was a small sign, I know they keep bringing up Keller's Meats, which doesn't say it's a Market or anything, it's just a small sign, Keller's Meats, it's like three by three, that wouldn't be a big deal. This one's ninety square feet, so that's the problem, so.
Councilmember Dornbeck?
Yes, so I, I assume that there are no plans in the future to have a good Italian deli or Italian Market there. No?
No. No, we're just gonna have baked goods in the mornings and then dinner at night. Small plates, fairly expensive, just Napa Valley wines at retail price. So we're gonna try and keep the prices down pretty good for people to get in and out, eat, get a simple meal. A pretty good meal. We've hired three, four chefs, actually they're all girls, that all live in Yountville also, so they're all gonna be walking to work and working in the mornings and working all the time. So it's all Yountville residents are running the place, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Any questions? I don't have any questions at this time, but I'll open up or continue to invite public comment during this public hearing. So any members of the public? I have a feeling.
Dulce Farmer, two thousand and five Oak Circle. But for thirteen years, I lived at two-one-seven-five Madison Street, and the side of that building is what I looked out every single morning from my kitchen. Having friends who worked at Yountville Market and knowing the Katz well and Sally Gordon, I can say that maybe Market won't be a problem keeping that on. I just want to put my two cents in because I think it's rather charming and living on that corner of Washington and Madison. And besides people asking where the French Laundry was, they would ask, well, what's this store? Can I buy carrots or cigarettes or whatever? And it would ensue a conversation, and it's about what was next door, the Katz with their honey, et cetera. And I didn't see that it threw people off in the bad way because even if they went in looking for bananas or, or coffee or whatever, they ended up staying once they saw whatever goods or services were being provided. So I just, I hope that it doesn't pose a conflict to your restaurant because I intend to eat there. But I do think it's charming whether it's historical or not. It's eye-catching, it, it takes you back to another era, which I think we all kind of need these days, especially with the winery coming in, which is beautiful but certainly very modern. I think it's kind of nice to have the balance in town of old and new. But also, I would recommend, since I just spent my birthday in Hillsburg last month, going to a wonderful restaurant called Scopa in Hillsburg. And even though La Candessa is a small sign, and what was the other example?
Keller, Keller Meats?
Yeah, Keller Meats, but the other one.
Taylor's and.
Taylor's, yeah, Gott's Roadside. Scopa is the old barber shop in Hillsburg on the square. And it's about this wide a building, but very tall. And the word "barber shop" is probably in letters almost as big as that. There is no signage for Scopa at all until you walk up to the front door and there's a menu about this size. And the word Scopa is about that big. And that place is packed apparently every single night. So I don't really think, it's not a barber shop, it's, you can pretty much tell when you get close to the, to the building, but it has not been at all a conflict for that proprietor in drawing business. So for whatever it's worth.
Thank you. Other members of the public like to comment on this item? No, I guess our public's all talked out.
I would like to point out the two emails that were received.
Yes, I was about to, no, I was looking, I did not print out Carol Fink's email, but.
It's on the back.
Oh, it is. There it is. All right, so I will go ahead and just address these and read them actually into the public record. The first one from Holly Hansen and James Massey, yes.
You don't need to read word by word, all you need to do is reference it and it'll be part of the record unless the mayor wishes.
Fair enough.
So what you can do is that there's been a, an email received by Carol Fink dated Sunday, March eighteenth, twenty-twelve, it's before you, and is in essence opposing, changing the theme, painting over the sign, I should say. And there's also one from Holly Hansen dated Sunday, March eighteenth, with also opposing the proposal to amend the existing design permit, use permit.
Yes, both are in favor of retaining that lettering.
That is correct.
Thank you. So that kind of concludes our public hearing participation. So I'll close the public hearing and welcome discussion by council. Councilmember Mueller?
I guess I think this has kind of got two parts. To really deem this historic, I kind of agree with the ZDRB, you'd really have to get a true historian in there and make a lot of comments. I fished around quite a bit on some books I have when I was, I got for the Gibbs House issue and on the internet. And from what I could find in terms of something historic, I mean, this is just paint. This is not three-D, this is not, and it was gone for a while and it's just paint. So I really, that would be the only way we could really do it, but, you know, to have, spend twenty-five thousand dollars for someone else to come and just tell us, you know, that's just paint. And so you can't declare paint historic, especially since you painted over the paint, and so it's even gone. So that just doesn't seem like the avenue to go. So I'm fine with, and I do think the word "historic" probably really means something else. And that's kind of the second part, that, you know, there's a lot of people that they may be calling this historic, but it, I think it's nostalgic and people, you know, see a lot of changes in Yountville and it reminds them, they're trying to hold on to stuff and it's, you know, up there where we've all, you know, really missed McGrath being there and that whole historic end of the town. So, you know, the applicant said he doesn't have any immediate needs. I would like, you know, to, if he really wants, has a major problem with everybody coming, which, and then really wants to paint it over to revisit it later. And I don't really mean to kick the can down the road, but I, I'm fine with taking historic out if we can't document historic. It's too bad they, like, you know, Bouchon's, that still says Gibbs up there. And Mr. Gibbs is really smart because he built that in there with brick, so it can't be changed. So Bouchon still says Gibbs up there. So, so that's, I'm not sure how that turns into a resolution or exactly what we need to do, but I don't really think we can leave it declared historic, but I don't really want to paint it over at this time, but I'm willing to revisit it if it really becomes a problem to talk about it again later.
Thank you. Councilmember Dornbeck?
Well, you know, I do, I always say that I believe in dealing with what is. And the truth is, we cannot prove that it's an historic sign. And so as much as I wish it were going to be a good Italian specialty store, I would have to say that I, I'm gonna have to hope that you don't have any problems, so you leave it up there. Because I, I agree with Councilmember Mueller that it's nostalgic, it gives you a wonderful feeling about the north end of town. But, and hopefully you will not experience a lot of complications from having it up there unless there are good complications, like they come in and decide to have pizza. But otherwise, I, I would be inclined to support this, which would allow you to paint over.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Well, I'm gonna completely agree. As you kind of said, I've thought about this, it's paint on the building. And you've changed the color of the building, we don't know what the original color was. To me, that doesn't really matter. It's, it's a sign that designates what kind of business is in there. It's not a Market. I mean, if my own business had bank written across it in ninety-square-foot letters, I just don't think that makes sense. And I, I mean, I don't dislike it, but I almost feel like I'm in Old Town San Diego or something, and it's, you know, or I'm in Disneyland, and it says the, you know, the Disneyland Hotel, but down there they're just selling tchotchke. They're not, it's not real, it's not what's going on in that building. And I think it's important for that to reflect what's going on. And if it was an architectural piece of the building that was separate, I think as you've kind of said, and, you know, the false front, et cetera, that's a whole different ballgame. But it's paint on a building, it doesn't reflect what's inside. I actually have always thought the Keller Meats, I liked the sign, but I thought they should have hung it up inside the restaurant. Because to me, it is very confusing when you're, when you're walking down the street and that sign was much more obvious than the AKA Bistro. And I don't think the reason they went out of business was the sign, but it just didn't make any sense to me. So I, I don't see any basis to say it's historical. I see basis to say it's actually not historical, going back to the original pictures. And I would absolutely support taking that off. And I, I don't dislike it, but it doesn't reflect what's happening there, and I think it should. So that's, I totally support the request of the applicant.
Thank you. And I'm going to be the lone dissenting voice on this one, it sounds like. I'll read the part of the staff report that's most compelling for me in the language of the zoning ordinance that it provides to promote the preservation of the historic character of this part of Old Town. And it goes on, I think this is a unique circumstance because this is Old Town. And this, while it's, as some of you have mentioned, just paint, I, I consider it just as iconic as the false front and laid brick in some of the other properties or whatever it might be. I do not support removing it. I think there's absolutely no basis that it could cause confusion. We're assuming a problem's going to exist in the future that doesn't exist now, so I feel like there's even less reason to say, yes, go ahead and take it down in the future at your whim. If there was legitimate evidence that there was confusion over time, I would feel differently. I certainly wouldn't want to impose a condition that is contrary to your ability to do business. But I don't see this as, as impeding that ability at all. Frankly, I see it as free, I won't even call it signage, a free logo to this building that you could take and use to your advantage as opposed to it being a negative. All you have to do is, south end of town, somebody says, where is Chicho? And you say, go to the brick-colored building that says Market in ninety square feet and you'll be there. I do think it's an iconic part of the north end of town. We don't have a lot of horses that pull up to the property next door, but we still have a hitching post out there. You know, there are characteristics of Old Town that I am interested in preserving, especially if there's no proven basis yet that there's a conflict. And you've stated that your, your sole concern is conflict with your business. I get that part. I also will hesitate to call it historical because there does appear to be some question. I don't, I don't have an answer to how many years it has to be there for it to be historical. Is thirty years enough? To me, there's, there's value there, even if it's only thirty years. My guess is it's somewhere between nineteen twenties and the seventies, but we don't know where. But I do know that it's one of the signature properties at the north end of town especially, and so I would like to retain it unless there's real evidence that, that it's a deterrent to being able to operate. So those are my comments. With that, is there action? Actually, staff has a comment.
Would be direction to staff to return based on whatever consensus the council arrives at.
Right, so I was gonna ask if there is consensus on action to either allow this or not. So are you saying you don't need a motion?
There's no resolution.
Okay, so you're hearing direction, it sounds like, from three of the four of the council?
No, I'm gonna ask, you will need to take a motion providing the direction, and then staff will come back with a resolution affirming that direction. I do want to point out that the current reason you're here is the fact that the conditional use permit says that this is not to be painted over. It uses the word "historical," but I do want to clarify that that phraseology in the conditional use permit is not a determination that the building is historical by historical preservation standards. So that was what was used at that point in time. Right now, you have a condition that says it's supposed to stay Market.
So the action that you're asking for tonight would be if council direction is to accept the request, we need to approve a motion to amend the.
We will bring back.
Conditional use permit to allow the potential for removal of, of the lettering.
I'm gonna be blunt here. If you say he doesn't have, the applicant does not have to keep Market, unless you put conditions and timing, he can paint it tomorrow, once you make that decision. So I think you need to understand that you are going to amend the conditional use permit. So that, that's what the action will be, allowing him to no longer have to follow that condition.
One option for a motion then would be conditioning the change of the, of the use permit only upon proof that there's a negative impact on the business.
What I would suggest, Mr. Mayor, if I may jump in, is if you're going to do that, is you set some period of review after the business is open so that you are continuing, there's a request to change the conditional use permit. You have, option number one is to not change it at all, and that condition stays in place on the, on the current CUP. Option two is to delete it now, and then as the town manager indicated, the, the applicant could paint it.
Anytime.
Once that resolution is approved.
It would be up to him.
Or number three is to, you could condition the, modify the CUP at that condition, or take no action on this and continue it out to a period certain. Because the applicant does have a right to have a decision made by the council at some point in time.
Fair enough.
And I'm gonna add a fourth one that's very similar, which is you can say, no, but we'll let the applicant come back at such point in time if there's evidence and information, and they can put the request for modification.
Well, that's implied in any.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, but I mean, the only other thing, and I'm sure there's a cost involved in making a reapplying, but that's what I'm trying to avoid for the applicant or the process.
So to town manager's last point, if the council tonight deems this historical, it would not allow him to return?
That is not on your agenda tonight, so that, that wouldn't be.
So it's not even an issue?
Not, it's, it's a request to remove that, that condition from the CUP. That's what's before you, the CUP.
Is there such a motion?
I'll make a motion to remove from the conditional use permit, to direct staff to draft a resolution to remove from the conditional use permit any, what I think is even vague statements that they have to keep the word "Market" on the building. To make that clear, that is not a requirement.
Is there a second to that motion?
Give me a minute.
Theory?
It's late, give me a minute, I gotta think. So could you repeat that, Vice Mayor?
I'll be more succinct. Make a motion to direct staff to come back with a resolution. Got that part?
Got that part.
To accept the applicant's request to remove the condition in the use permit that requires the word "Market" to be painted on the front of the building.
Yeah, I can't second that.
So there's, there's, is there a second? There's no second to that motion. Is there another motion to be had?
Another motion, okay. I'd like to make a motion that we remove the existing condition and replace it with that the applicant needs council approval to paint over the Market Sign.
Is that, is that fair direction?
Actually, that's the current requirement. You would, I mean, that's.
That's the process we're going through right now.
Correct.
What you, what you could do this evening is, in essence, what you're doing is denying the request without prejudice. the request without prejudice for review by the council at a future date. So, what you're doing is, you're not saying no.
Right.
You're only saying no tonight.
Correct. That's what I, how do I word that?
Okay. Well, then, the question that I would have to the council, Mr. Mayor, is, do you wish to revisit it automatically, or upon a further request from the applicant?
Upon a further request from the applicant. I'd like to make a motion that we bring forth a resolution.
You don't even need to do that?
You deny the request. We don't have a resolution.
If I may, all you're doing, then, is at this time, is to deny the request without prejudice, and that the applicant, if he chooses to, or if he can demonstrate the requisite confusion to the business, that he brings that evidence back.
But it's not our, it's not our position.
It's prejudice.
Well, yeah, it's not our position, I don't think, to put any condition on his ability to come back.
Then you just deny it without prejudice.
Is that, is that fair to say?
That's fair to say.
So, I'd like to make a motion that we deny tonight's request to paint over the sign without prejudice.
Which, just to clarify again, to paraphrase the town attorney, that means anytime in the future, for any reason or no reason, the applicant can return and will do this again.
That is correct.
And conditions may be different at that time, but the result may be the same at that time.
That is also correct.
Is there a second to that motion, to deny the applicant's request without prejudice? I'll accept, I'll be the second to that motion, to deny the request without prejudice. So, we have a motion that's been seconded. Can we have a, let's do a roll call, since we have four people.
Councilmember Moeller?
Yes.
Mayor Denbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorenbecker?
No.
Vice Mayor Chilton?
No.
Okay. So, we're nowhere. Is there another motion to be had?
You could continue this matter to another time when you have all five.
Is there a way that we could continue the matter till after the applicant has an opportunity to test the?
That would have been the motion we just voted down.
Well, I'll make a motion to continue this matter to the next regularly scheduled Yonville Town Council meeting.
Is there a second to that continuance? So, we're not acting on it tonight. We would be, are you saying date certain being April third?
Whatever that is.
April third? Continue to April third for potential action?
Can I make a request? Question?
There's a motion on the floor. Before we discuss it, we need to have a second. Is there, I'll second it.
Thank you.
Now, discussion about the motion to continue this item until April third.
I have to discuss that only?
That's, yeah, we have a motion on the floor that needs to be voted on. It's been seconded. So, you can discuss the motion, but that's all we're discussing at this point.
I just think that that's probably not going to resolve a lot, except, you know, it might be three to two one-way. I think part of the problem we still might have next time we come is really maybe understanding what our intent is to do here. And maybe there was just some confusion about denying it with prejudice. I don't know.
Yes, town attorney.
If I'm understanding, maybe, if I apologize if I'm misunderstanding, but if I'm understanding, Councilmember Dorenbecker's request is to set it out in the future.
My request.
No, no. He's not talking about the motion on the floor. He's talking about the previous vote.
No. You're talking about a date specific for just this, but I'm also trying to interpret that, to give the operator an opportunity to start the business up, and that it would come back to you automatically within a certain period of time. Now, what's, that wasn't the vice mayor's motion. Vice mayor's motion is very clear. It comes back next meeting for decision. One, thumbs up, thumbs down.
With the full council.
Or back to where we are, at square one.
So, there's a motion
That's the motion on the floor.
There's a motion on the floor to continue this item to April third.
Yes.
Okay, we have a roll call on that motion. I seconded that motion, just to make sure you had it on the record.
Vice Mayor Chilton?
Yes.
Mayor Denbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Moeller?
No.
Councilmember Dorenbecker?
No.
Okay. So, let's work on this again. So, is the intent to require the applicant to prove a negative impact in order to be allowed to remove the sign, the lettering?
Yeah. Let me make one other statement for consideration. If the council, which you have deadlocked on a couple of votes and various motions, if you take no action, by that, by the fact that you don't have a majority in one direction or another, the
The application is denied.
Application is denied, and the applicant can renew that application at a date in the future.
So, it virtually has the same impact as denied with no prejudice?
In essence, yes. So, unless, unless there's going to be
If there's no further motion, that's where we're headed. If there's no additional motion that is voted on, we're going to basically deny by default the request. Is there another motion?
Be appropriate to go on to the next item, then, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. I will end the discussion on this item, and so, in essence, the request has been denied. But you're welcome to open, to return with that request at any date in the future. But because there was no action taken by the council, you can't take any action. So...
The request is removed historical connotation. It had nothing to do with this.
And we have chosen by failure of motions to not rule on your request to, your request is to change the conditional use permit to allow you to remove the sign at your discretion, and there was no acceptance of that request.
Well, and to be fair, Mr. Mayor, the letter of the applicant dated January nine, 2012, reflects a request to remove the historical connotation attached to the word "market." So, that is part of the, part of the request also. But I think, as being stated, the terminology "historical," and unfortunately, we don't have the CUP in front of us in our packet, but the term "historical" is not in the connotation of historic, in a different historical preservation concept. So, I think it's just, it's a word. It has no, it has no legal significance. And unless there's a specific finding that it's historical, it's a word that just isn't the CUP.
I'd like to make a motion.
Well, we've already, I've already closed the item for voting, but
Well, but that, I apologize, Mr. Mayor. That's an issue that was
Should have been, should have been brought up before we closed the item?
Well, you know, the council can always reconsider the matter or not, so.
So, my question to you is, as presented, the recommended action is to vote on changing the conditional use permit, regardless of whether it says "historical" or not. It was, as stated here, it's to change the conditional use permit to allow the applicant to remove the lettering. It doesn't matter, according to that, whether it's deemed historical or not.
What I would say, if you took one, you have a conditional use permit that says the market has to be painted based on a historical. So, if you were to refer the reference to "historical," you could strike all that, but you still have a condition that the market sign is supposed to be there. So, that's what, that's what's troubling in terms of trying to, because if you were to delete the historical reference as is being, you know, that component, which could be done, but you still have the base condition that the market sign was supposed to have been painted. Now, I, so I mean
That's not, that's not what staff presented us tonight.
I know. And that's, well, that's not, I'm going to say, and that's what's our understanding of what the applicant's asking. So, there could be clarification if we're just talking about striking the reference to "historical," or if it truly is the flexibility to paint over. Because, like I say, right now, the condition is, market must be kept.
So, I'm going to, I'm going to allow us to revisit this item tonight, and what I'm going to do is move that we continue this item to April third, so that we can have clarification from staff on what our proposed action is, since we don't seem to even understand what that action is.
I'll second that motion.
Is there
We, and we do not, it was
Prior to moving on that motion, does staff have additional information?
Well, I was, I was looking for the actual CUP, which does not, is not here before us this evening. I would recommend that the mayor's recommended action be acted on by the town council. Because if you look at the January ninth letter, and it really says that the only request is to remove the historical connotation attached to the word "market." But since I'm not, I can't advise you on what that means vis-à-vis the CUP, because the CUP's not before us.
Fair enough. So, what we need to have happen is, what are the ramifications of a determination of the term "historical" in the CUP? And so, we have a motion and a second, and a roll call vote is asked for again on the motion to continue this to April third.
Mayor Denbar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Moeller?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorenbecker?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And sorry for the confusion, but there seems to be some. And so, without asking the council to make a determination that we're not clear on, we're going to continue this to the third. And hopefully, we will also have a full council, so that if there is a mixed opinion, there'll be a majority opinion that you can take back with you. So, appreciate your patience, and
Sorry.
We'll revisit this on April third. Thank you very much. We're going to move as briskly as possible on to item nine C, zoning ordinance amendment introduction and first reading of ordinance number four zero two dash twelve. Staff report, please.
Thank you. This is a proposed ordinance to amend the parking and loading ordinance related to restaurant parking ratio. This is a topic that's come up before in discussions at council level, regarding the parking ratio currently at four to one. That's four seats to one parking space, being inadequate for the level of service that this town increasingly becomes higher and higher throughout town and all the restaurants, and the inadequacy, perhaps, of the current ratio to address both the level of service and employees that are hired by the restaurants to provide that level of service. So, we did a, kind of a, had our, available to us a survey of other cities and what a typical parking ratio is, and there's various formulas, but a very common one was three to one. We recognize that the four to one ratio was implemented in recognition of the inns and hotels available in town, and that there would be some pedestrian traffic to the restaurants. However, it's been evident in some cases where the actual ratio has not been adequate for some of the businesses. This will, I point out, affect only new restaurants. The existing restaurants will continue on an as-is basis. Most of them are already, well, all of them are at capacity of how many seats they can have. So, it would only affect new restaurants, and that would include whatever goes in at the former PJ Steak site, the McGrath's Garage site, and any other, perhaps, if anything, has ever done to the old Compadre's site, or on V Marketplace or Vintage State property to increase restaurant seating.
And in your staff report, you mentioned full-service restaurants.
Right, as opposed to limited service.
Could you give example of limited service with the other separate requirement of one space for two hundred fifty square feet of floor area?
Well, that would be where there's no table service.
Could you just give examples for the council's
Outdoor seating at Bouchon Bakery, for instance.
Okay. Does that conclude your report?
It does, yes.
Are there any questions to the staff report? Councilmember Dorenbecker?
Yes, I have one. I was under the impression that on the east side of Washington Street, especially in Old Town, that there were no full-service restaurants to be allowed. Is that true, or?
It's, yeah, pointed out in the staff report that this would exclude any, anything in the RSC. That's already a provision that prohibits new restaurants from being established there, so.
And while this is a new ordinance to address parking by patrons for restaurants, you know, where, what are we going to do about the employees and where they park? You know, anyway.
Well, if I could clarify, we're not, we don't have a separate parking plan for employees and for
I know.
Well, it's, I don't think it's legal for us to have two separate ordinances for employees and for guests, but what we're trying to do is, the overall impact on a site, we're changing the parking requirement there. So, it basically, in effect, has an impact on employee and guest.
Right.
I do understand that.
And if I, if I could, Councilmember Dorenbecker, one of the things we've realized is, our current ratio is meant to include the employees and the guests, and that's why we're saying, it's in, our experience, based on what we see on the street, is inadequate. So, we will continue by lowering the standard that will hopefully help prevent exacerbating the problem, and the expectation is that some of the employees would be parked on the site for those new developments coming forward. And then, we are still going to continue having our ongoing efforts to try to manage and improve the existing condition. This is just our efforts to try to be a little bit proactive, to not compound a situation which we already know is not working.
I see.
And if I could dangerously speak for staff, we can't find a formula to require parking per quality of restaurant and service level of restaurant, because it's just an intangible number. What we can do is try to require the site to handle more parking, and that would be actually more focused on employees, because that's the, that's the number that fluctuates by business, where the number of seats is much more able to be calculated. So, this is actually more of an effort toward the overflow of employees than it is overflow of guests.
Well, I accept that. The, that's fine. Never mind.
Is that a fair review, Bob, of the point of this?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I don't like to speak for staff, if I can avoid it, but in the interest of brevity. Are there any other questions of staff? Vice Mayor?
Bob, you made a comment, and as I really thought through this issue, you talked about, first of all, it's only new businesses. But you said that we see examples where the current ratio is not adequate. And almost every example that I can think of, they don't even meet the four to one ratio. I mean, Bouchon does not, the French Laundry does not, I would assume Hurley's is not, I would think Pizzeria Zanzi does not, I don't know if Red does. PJ Steak certainly did not. I mean, these are all examples of places where there's parking problems, but they don't even meet the four to one ratio. So, I feel like we're, I mean, you can see what I'm thinking, my thought process is, yeah, those are problems, but we would, by rule today, not approve any of those places. So, why, why then say, "Okay, we've got a problem there. Let's kind of add, you know, bigger issue at some of these other sites," which are going to have to comply with a parking standard that most of the restaurants today don't?
The ratio has been applied at, say, the new, where it's Redwood now, as part of that project, are the restaurants that are part of the vintage estates and at V Marketplace, Back Blues, and Bottega. We do apply the four to one in those situations. You're right, a lot of the restaurants were long-established and without sufficient parking to begin with. And that's, and some of them have arrangements, like Red has their parking lot, however, they have an arrangement after hours with Piazza Corsa, to use that lot. And there's these various arrangements that some restaurants have.
I also want to point out that we're talking about the applicant, a potential landowner's choice to use a restaurant and to try to design the parking to adequately meet the need. And all of the future sites that we're talking about, a restaurant is not a foregone conclusion. There are other commercial uses, retail, office, or other that would apply in the parking ratio. We're just learning, for all the reasons you guys are talking about, whatever the collective decision of number of years has not worked well when it comes to restaurants.
And I also point out that the examples of the projects that are likely to come before us as restaurants are at North Washington, and the parking becomes much more impacted into the residential, because there's not a lot of street parking up in that area, and it becomes important to make sure the demand is it becomes important to make sure the demand is addressed on-site.
Well, it does, though, preclude, while it doesn't affect an existing business, it would preclude an existing business who might be able to expand now under a four to one ratio, they would not be able to potentially under a three to one ratio. Is that correct?
Existing businesses, that's true, but I cannot, I think they're all at capacity already. I don't think there's any that have latent unused capacity.
Well, I can only think of one, but...
We went through, we actually did try to go through all, and also, one could apply that only the increased seating would be subject to the three to one ratio, not the whole reconfiguration. But we've, we've gone through, and there's just, you know, almost everybody has maximized their build-out at this point in time.
So, let's, let's get back to, are there any further questions?
Yeah.
Okay. Any comment from the public on this item? Ed? No? Okay. So, let's consider potential action the staff is asking us to introduce, and I'm assuming waive the first reading of this ordinance, to change the parking ratio to three seats per one space. Is there additional discussion on this, or is there potential action?
They are.
Discussion, Vice Mayor?
If I could just make one comment, because, I don't know, I, I feel like that most of the examples I can think of, I mean, it's the examples that you gave, Redwood, or what happens with Bottega, et cetera, I don't see those as a major source of parking issues. And I do agree with that north part of Washington will be, when that gets higher development, will be more of a taxing on the parking issue. I think what we are essentially doing, I mean, what we would be doing in the statements made is, by making it three to one, we're making it harder for somebody to pencil out a business plan on those parcels for a restaurant, because either they're going to have to do a super-high-end restaurant that's going to have enough profit to offset the cost of that, or we're backdoor zoning restaurants out of that, those areas. That's, that's the way I see that, and I understand the parking thing, but I don't think it, it won't change anything that's happening now, and, I don't know, I, I feel like if we apply the four to one ratio, even those situations, it's very challenging. Why we are going to up it as it is, these, it's all these little tiny things, the 25% FAR, and the parking ratio now at three to one, that's what makes it so expensive to do business in this town, and why you don't see affordable restaurants here, is because all of those things get piled on, and I feel like we're just cranking that up a little bit more. So, that's why there will not be an Italian deli market.
Well, I think, Vice Mayor?
I mean, I just don't, I don't support it. I understand the point. I, I think the benefit is to North Washington, which is, you know, I get that piece, and I think that makes sense, but...
Are there other comments from council? Councilmember Mohler?
Well, I think that, you know, even if we put this in place, I've always felt that if somebody who comes with a really great project and is asking us for an exemption to that, and can, you know, make a good case for that exemption, that we always have that, that ability. So, because I've, I thought, you know, first of all, when I initially thought about it, this was really great, we're going to really kind of take care of some parking, but I think that the parcels that we're left with on the west side of Washington that could possibly have a large restaurant, I don't think it's going to be as challenging as some, you know, thinking about residential-scale commercial and putting stuff in the back and some of that other issue. So, you know, I, I just don't think it'll be that big of a problem, and we always have the ability for them to, hey, if somebody comes and really wants to bring, you know, a restaurant that a lot of people can afford, and they'll, and it's really going to be attractive to the town, I think we'd be willing to maybe take a look at that and, and grant them some exceptions, which we're entitled to do, if, if we have a case, we could make specific findings. So that's kind of my question, is that true? We could have that ability to make findings if we wanted to, that were maybe unique to a project?
You do have that ability. And again, like I say, I think the challenge that we face, staff, and I think the elected officials do, is, you know, parking is generally conveyed and discussed as one of the number-one issues, and the direction from the council has been to staff to try to improve the situation, and certainly not worsen it. So, yes, if you, you know, if somebody wants to come and they want to request a variance from a condition, we can, you can consider that.
And before we continue this discussion, I'm going to ask council, if it's willing to make a motion to extend the meeting to 10:30.
We'll approve extension of tonight's meeting till 10:30.
I'll second.
Hall in favor?
Aye.
We don't need a roll call on that one.
Thank you.
Okay. Continue conversation, Councilmember, Councilmember Dornbecker, do you have comments on this item?
You know, I think that on the north end of town, the parcels that are available to, to develop and make a large-scale restaurant have the capacity to make parking possibly at three to one ratio, but, I don't know, I, I am sort of feeling like, we are, and I understand that we do say that parking is a, is a difficult in town, but this only applies to possibly two parcels. And if we, you know, grant one, you know, a dispensation, so they don't have to follow it, what point is putting this in? Anyway, those are my comments.
Okay. And I'll say, this, to me, is almost a no-brainer, that we should accept this, staff is responding to what council has directed them to do in the past, which is come up with solutions to, I think it's the largest concern that residents have, which is overflow parking into their neighborhoods and off the site of the businesses. I don't see this as overly punitive or restrictive by any new business, or a remodeled business, because we have to consider existing businesses do change, and they could be remodeled, and if we don't take action, we continue to allow what we all admit to is an unacceptable condition. So to take no action, to me, is just inappropriate for the council. So, if we need to address the FAR or other issues that are, are potentially punitive to new business, we can do that. But clearly, I think we need to act on future parking demands on future, in future businesses. So, is there a motion to introduce and waive the first reading of this ordinance?
Well, we'll do just that. I would like to introduce ordinance number 402-12, an ordinance of the town council of the town of Yonville, amending the Yonville Municipal Code Title 17, Chapter 17.88, off-street parking and loading related to the restaurant parking ratio. And waive the first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I will second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. I knew we could do that without a roll call. I was pretty sure. Okay, so that ordinance introduction and waived first reading is accepted.
Mr. Mayor, in the interest of time and the fact that the council had such a great segue into one of the future items, I'm going to request that we move our first budget workshop to the 4-3 meeting. But you asked about, how do we, we have a short staff report to talk about, how are some things that we can talk about to perhaps encourage other uses and involving things other than parking? And that makes a great segue into 10B, which we will try to do in a short period. This is for feedback.
So, before that, I want to ask if we have a motion to move 10A to April 3rd?
Motion to continue 10A to April 3rd council meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Is there any opposition? No opposition. So that's unanimously approved. Okay, we're going to skip on to 10B, and Town Manager, continue.
And we'll send Bob on vacation on 4-3, so there'll be no planning on 4-3.
So, staff report on office development incentive concept?
This is a request from staff to the town council to consider the concept of incentivizing office, professional office development within town, similar to the way we do it with affordable, or not even affordable, mixed-use residential units with commercial development, where we allow, in that case, a bonus 15% FAR to be applied to the development of apartments or residential housing. In that case, they're not even required to be affordable, it's just generation of housing stock, and I believe the, what was envisioned by that program was this live-work type of an arrangement where the units would tend to be more affordable owing to their size, and workers would be able to not have to commute, and they would be in proximity to where they work. The reality of that has not panned out to the vision, to where they're, frequently these units are given over to other uses, and they haven't really achieved the intended purpose. But there, pointed out in the staff report, staff has noticed the trend for demand in professional office space in town, and there's a shortage, from what we can tell by the conversations we've had with people seeking professional office space, and we believe that's an area that is warranted, where an incentive is warranted to generate development. We do not have specifics to the plan, there are things to be worked out on how the parking would be balanced on-site, but we are bringing to the council this concept of providing incentives in perhaps the area FAR for commercial development to develop commercial office.
And if I could add on that, it's partly the reaction that you all had to the Heston discussion. You know, when we look at some of our future site development, is that 15-foot setback in the front meeting our purposes? Is that something we're willing to have, a lesser setback if it gets us certain other things? And I think Vice Mayor Shilton brought that up, and I just think, if you have, if you're interested in this, staff would like to propose, our challenge as a built-out community is, our approaching build-out, we only have one or two left, but the question is, can we get these sites better developed, reflecting our current needs? And that's what we're, you know, we saw and heard from the council a willingness to say, maybe some of these things don't apply anymore. So, we're, we want to get a trade-off, so that you're getting a quality project back, because, you know, there's a typicality that people will come in and build to our minimum standards. You know, if that's a five-foot setback, if it's a parking ratio, whatever it is, the first thing the applicant does is play around on the site and maximize it. And then they try to come in, and we're saying, maybe that's not helping us as much. And if, so anyway, that's kind of the genesis of where this is coming from. And obviously, when we only have a few sites in place, the sooner we work on it, the more we have the ability to potentially positively influence, rather than your term, Vice Mayor, the outcome that we feel would be better for our community interest.
But haven't we also had the discussion about the inappropriateness of incentivizing any single retail use?
This is not a retail use, this is office.
Or a commercial use, any specific business use we've shied away from incentivizing in other cases. Is that not accurate?
Well, in the case of a housing, we have incentivized that. There was a great interest in the last, not the last round of the housing element, but the previous round, to do mixed-use development, and that was put in there, and the incentive of the 15% was implemented at that time.
But we've also refused to put a list of specific uses, commercial uses, as priority or incentivize them, and allow certain businesses an added benefit that existing businesses didn't get. Are you saying this is...
Well, I think, we're talking about the building environment, not the business. And I think what you're looking at is, you know, in most cases, you're looking at a mixed use, where something's going to be on the first floor, and we would encourage the, the office on the second. So you need to think about it as the building footprint, and not specifically the use. And it's perfectly okay for you to say, no, this isn't something you want staff to work on. We won't. We do think, based on some conversations that you've had, it is something that we could chew on better and bring you some ideas.
Okay, Councilmember Mohler, did you have a comment?
Can I make a comment, or is this questions? I'll just make a comment.
Either one. Yeah, comment's fine.
All right. Yeah, I totally agree with what the mayor just said. I mean, I think we've always kind of resisted that. I know I've kind of brought that up for various other stuff, and I do understand, I just don't see how I can rationalize making an incentive for office space, you know, over residence, or over additional retail. Yeah, I'm willing, I know we only have a few parcels left, but, so I would give direction to staff, and when somebody comes in and they've got something that's pretty creative out there, since we only have, you know, a few more to really do to, I mean, we heard a lot from the audience tonight, oh, I came and they said no. Well, I think that we have done a really good job of that recently. They'll probably say no, but, you know, give it a shot, or see what they say, or, you know, come to us and let us make that decision, but to have a blanket thing for office space, I mean, it could just be, you know, empty. We can't, we're not, we can't really enforce somebody who has a residence above there to rent it, we can't really force them to rent the, the office space either. So, I just don't see why we need, you know, this office space. I'd rather have retail, so, I mean, or maybe keep the residence to keep with our housing element, I just...
Let me back up, I'm not, I'm, we're not helping, we've done something wrong in our explanation. This is applying only to commercial, not residential.
So, west side only.
And it would apply to a mixed-use building. Again, in the staff report, we talk about, it really would be, right now, you have an incentive for mixed-use commercial that puts housing, and it actually does incentivize putting housing units on the second floor, and what we're suggesting is maybe some type of equivalency or a different factor that would encourage office development at this time on the second floor, rather than residential.
Okay. Vice Mayor, you had a comment?
I feel like the contrarian tonight. I totally agree with this. I think it makes complete sense. I feel like I can know for as much of a fact as a fact can be, is there, it's absolutely demand for, for office space in Yonville. I think it's extremely low-impact, and to me, it adds to the stock of, if you're thinking about retail, it takes, I mean, a little bit, but it's a little bit of that pressure of some places that people have offices, that wouldn't be better if there was retail, there's a couple of those. It's, it's just a need, it's so low-impact, I think it makes sense. I, I can't see any, any reason not to at least consider it, and actually, I'd be fine coming up with a list of incentive businesses, but I know that would be a very hard thing to do.
And potentially illegal.
Well, potentially, only potentially. So I, I told, I mean, there's nothing in here that I don't support.
Councilmember Dornbecker, since what we're doing tonight is asking staff to move forward or not move forward on giving us information.
Well, I think it must be very late in the day when I find myself always agreeing with Louis.
Where are the seconds, though? Give me some seconds.
But, and I do have to say that I see demand for office, I think that Maison Brie is looking for some office space, hopefully. But, you know, if, if we, you know, I, it's so funny, I looked at this and I thought, oh, something we can all agree on.
And to, for the record, I'm not disagreeing with the proposal, but I wanted to point out that it seemed like this was inconsistent with our actions in the past.
And I did not realize...
And maybe conditions are different.
I, I guess it didn't, being the new guy, I didn't realize that that is something that had been established, and...
You can change that, though.
On the other hand, I, I think that, given the market demands and/or, or no interest in doing retail in our town for one reason or another, this sort of would be a, a local-serving accommodation for business, and, I don't know, I think that it depends on what you come back with as far as an incentive. I'll put it back on you.
So I'm going to jump to the end here, and, and direct staff to move forward on this. Vice Mayor, Councilmember Dornbecker, and I'm fine with you moving forward, and I think, you know, we'll, we'll determine... you know, we'll, we'll determine at that point if we want to really take action. I think that's fair. Is that, is there agreement on, on that point, Councilmember Mueller?
And I would also say, you know, that I am willing, if a different type of business that doesn't fit into necessarily category, category of office space, comes and says, I want an increase of 15% FAR because, and it's a really good reason, I am open to talking about that.
Let's include that in the, the future conversation about this shift for retail office space. Let's talk about the legality of, of doing incentivizing in commercial or mixed, whatever it is. So let's have that conversation at a future...
Absolutely. I just want to clarify that you do have the legal right, as long as you set structures in place to help encourage what you want. That is not illegal. I just want you all to be...
That'll be, that'll be part of the discussion at a future date. I'm sorry about rushing this forward, but we have more than 15 more minutes worth of business.
That's true.
And I think we have agreement on the direction, so I'm going to, I am going to push this forward.
Thank you.
Are there any staff informational reports this evening?
Just one very briefly, and it's not a report, I'm just going to break and show off the town hardware that was earned for our distinguished budget presentation by the government.
Why are you holding it up? Why isn't our finance director holding that up?
Because we, we had, we had a game plan, but we, it was going to be part of our budget presentation.
Congratulations again for that.
Yeah, good job.
We, we appreciate it as we deal with it, so thank you very much for your time. No other informational reports from staff? Seeing none, moving on. Council reports, do we have any specific reports? I know the Vice Mayor attended the flood control.
It was the world's shortest meeting, we got a two-minute update on what's going on with flood control, which is nothing different, and we adjourned.
Very good, just in time. And we have a NCTPA meeting tomorrow, as we learned earlier, when we had a discussion about the proposed sales tax initiative. Any other meeting before, Councilmember Mueller?
Yes. Yesterday, I attended the Upper Valley Waste Management Agency, and our current, a couple things, there's been some reorganization at the county level. They used to have a separate waste management, was an environmental management, and there was public works and planning departments, so they're now combining environmental management and the public works department. So, our leader there on, from staff will now be the acting director of that combined department. Also, I wanted to remind everybody in the, the, your trash bill that you'll be getting at the end of this month, in March, there is going to be a little mailer card in there that we, it's prepaid for stamps, and we're asking all the residents, if they want a continued town cleanup day, would they be willing to pay six years annually, 10 years annually, or 12 years annually? So, we'll have that information in early May, probably still during our budget discussions, just to get, keep our finger on the pulse about, you know, whether we really need to budget that, or is that something that our residents feel like they would be willing to, to pay for as part of their waste management fee?
And if I can impose on the town clerk, the budget discussions have been established as May...
May 8th and 23rd?
8th and 23rd. Budget workshops, 8th and, May 8th and May 23rd.
You actually have a calendar in your staff report that will be modified, because now it'll be 4-3, remember, we have four workshops, two are conducted in regular council meetings and two special meetings.
Fair enough. Okay. Other meeting reports, Councilmember Doran Becker?
Well, I did meet with the Women Veterans of Yountville, and I met the Undersecretary of the Veterans Affairs for Women for the state, and so we're just sort of opening a dialogue about their needs, and so that's something. And then tomorrow, Thursday, I will be attending my first water conservation meeting.
Yeah, very good, thank you. I want to quickly mention more announcements than meetings, remind everyone who's still tuned in, Taste of Yountville this Saturday, from noon to 5:00. It will be a wonderful food and wine extravaganza that only Yountville can pull off. So, come on out and enjoy that experience. Also, I wanted to reiterate what Alman Bundy mentioned early this evening, on April 1st, the Vietnam Veterans of America Welcome Home Day will be held at the Yountville Community Center, it's April 1st. I believe it was 12:30, music starts, and the formal program is one...
One o'clock.
One o'clock.
And where does that take place?
That is the Yountville Community Center.
Oh, good.
Also, just very quickly, the next Pathway Home graduation is going to take place at the community center also, on Friday, March 30th. And tomorrow, one of the things that we will be discussing at the NCTPA is the future of the Napa County Arts Commission, and our representative on that commission has been part of some dialogue about proposed future structure of that commission, so she's had to dive right in, as we warned her she might. So, we might know more from that meeting, and certainly from the Board of Supervisors' meeting in April. Any other announcements from council?
No.
No, with that, I am going to move on, move us on to, we're going to skip over future agenda items.
Well, we might want to let everyone know where the joint meeting with the Napa County Board of Supervisors will be.
It will be here at the council chambers.
That is going to be here at our regularly scheduled meeting on April 3rd, when we are going to be...
It will be an early start, early start.
Okay. But we will be joined by the Board of Supervisors, specifically talking about items that affect the entire county. Board Chair Caldwell is having the supervisors attend each individual city and town council over the course of the next several weeks, so we are the first. So thank you for that, heads up. With that, I'm going to move us on to closed session. We do, I assume, have a couple items in closed session?
Just a couple. We do not need to do item B this evening, we'll bring back a full update, because there are some other matters we need to, excuse me, talk to the Town Manager. So it's just item A, which is Conference Labor Negotiator, the Yountville Employees Association, on representing management employees, and item C, a very, we want to do that very brief update on one potential litigation matter.
And any reportable action anticipated?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. So for, with that, we are going to go into closed session, our next...